Hi everyone, I'm Ruth Rayburn. I'm Director of Creative Lancashire and it's Creative Lancashire that's organised this event today. I just want to thank the funders for funding the event, that's Lancashire County Council and the Arts Council who funded this event, so thank you to them. And thank you to everybody for turning up, this is fantastic turnout, we were actually sold out and we've got a great line-up of speakers for you today. I just wanted to point out a few things so that everybody gets the message at the same time. There was a bit of confusion this morning about the one-to-ones, those were surgeries that were booked in advance of today and I think some people were disappointed that they couldn't get a one-to-one. However, this afternoon you have another chance because at 3.45 in this space will be all the experts that were giving those one-to-one surgeries and you'll have an opportunity to go around to different tables and talk to them individually. So keep that in mind, get the most out of today that you possibly can and if there are experts in the room that you want to talk to, please take the opportunity, grasp it today because you may not get another chance. So please get as much out of this as possible. I just want to draw your attention to, we've got a fanzine here that's a special edition just for today and it's a limited edition, done by Preston Isna Paris, thank you to them. And I also want to let you know that you've got a badge on today that you have to hang on to if you want to go to the music event at the Continental tonight and not have to pay to get in. So you're very fortunate in that you can get in tonight with your badge whereas other ordinary people will have to pay. So I'm going to hand you over to Pete now, just to say could you all turn off your mobile phones and everything, I don't want you to miss anything. And yeah, I hope you enjoy the event, thank you.
Thanks Ruth. Hello, I'm Pete, Pete Jenkinson. Before I forget, I need to ask you all to look out of that door there, that's the fire exit even, so if anyone combusts, we need to run out of that door immediately, okay? So I'm Pete. First song going to introduce the guests with us today, okay, says David and Joe, okay, from Verbal Vigilante Music, that's Dan Millington from the PPL and Rachel Wood from Woodwork Music, okay, they're going to, all going to have a chance to tell you about themselves a bit more shortly. Firstly, just to introduce this workshop, if you like, I think the most productive for everybody is if we have an informal way of approaching this, so if you've got something to say or you feel like you want to stand in front of the projector, just like me, move across, if you've got something to say or you've got any questions, just fire out immediately, okay? Don't be shy, just ask, okay, because I think once a moment passes then you might not have another opportunity to ask a question. Okay, so as I said, my name's Pete, I've been working with Creative Lancashire for a few years now as a music mentor and as perhaps a business advisor to some of their clients and also help out at events like this. In my own professional life, I run and manage three or four record labels, I operate a consultancy and also teach on, I think free colleges at present on various business modules on music courses like Music Tech, Commercial Music Technology etc. So I do the modules that Music Tech students are doing that they really do not want to know about but really need to, okay? So today's session, the workshop is mainly focused on the copyrights, okay, the copyright of composition or composing or songwriting, which is one of the main music copyrights along with recording, okay, the recording copyright. Now I just wanted to clarify that everybody knows that they're two distincts and they're different, okay? So you've got the recording copyright and you've got the composition copyright. The three, well the three main ways of making money, if you like, out of music or making a living out of music are sales, so CDs, downloads etc. You've got performance, so you can play, play your music live, or it can be broadcast, which is something that the PPL, PRS, Collection Society is for, and Dan's going to explain a lot more about that in a bit. And the third type is licensing, okay? Licensing is a, is a secondary form of sale, I guess, and licensing can be anything for third party, which is to another label or a publishing company, or it can be for compilation, you know, now that's what I call music albums, or it can be for synchronization licensing, which is what Rachel Wood is going to be telling you all about today, okay? Synchronization licensing is basically putting your music to a moving image, okay, and that's the only distinction, the only separate, separate from just licensing it to a record label, okay? So are there any questions on the copyright aspect of music before we move on? Because it's really important that everyone understands that there's the recording and there's also the composition copyright, both are of equal value. Maybe, maybe I should give you an example, say for instance, a track is played on the radio, Chris Evans plays a track on his show. There's, for the performance or broadcast of that piece of music, there's always going to be a payment for the composition and also for the recording side of that music, so the BBC will be paying for both of those aspects, okay? So getting your heads that it's totally separate, okay? Right then. Now, I think, I think hopefully I've simplified it and I know many of you will already understand that anyway, but for those of you that don't, hopefully it will help as we run through this workshop. Okay, so who should we go to first? Joe, David, so what I want you to do is I want you to explain how music composition is relevant to you and your business, how you got into it, what advice you could give to, there's, I know there's plenty of songwriters and composers out in the audience today, and then we'll move along the panel, then when everyone's had a good, a good say about what they do and it's relevant for today, perhaps open it out and do a bit more of an informal question and answer, okay? So over to you guys.
Cool, okay, well, we're Verbal Vigilante, essentially we're, we're composers, so we're the guys that write the music that gets placed and licensed on hopefully things like film trailers and TV shows and things like that. We, we started out just after leaving university, our first kind of break or our first foray into kind of writing music for anything really was an opportunity offered to us by one of my former tutors at York College, wasn't it? And we got asked to do the music for just a small production, one of her productions in York, of After Juliette, so we did that and we thought, oh, this is, this is really, really interesting and we got involved with kind of writing music for more applied medium.
I think before that, we were maybe coming from the mentality of still both being in bands and, and writing music for music's sake and once we'd actually done that first bit of what is called applied music, so music for a production, then we realised, yeah, this is actually something we really enjoy, it's been really successful, so maybe we can make a living out of it. And that was the start of the journey and yeah, we're starting to make a living, we're getting there. So yeah, that was, that was the initial thing. Then we moved into a bit of music for animation, we've got quite a few little contacts in the animation world now and from that we moved into doing some short films, doing some feature films, low-budget feature films and sort of most recently in terms of our career progression, we've been writing what's called production music, which is music for music libraries and what we've specialised in is, is called just trailer music, so it's music for film trailers or music for TV promos, that kind of thing, so that's, that's kind of what we've been doing in the, in the last year and a bit, working with publishers of both in the, in the States and in the UK and sort of getting as much of a catalogue of, of work behind us as we can through which we will obviously be making sort of performance incomes as Pete was talking about, sort of writers' incomes and also publishing income from that.
I think it's been, it's been kind of interesting, our development from when we first started and our thought on how the industry operated was kind of super simplified, you know, we did that first project and we thought that kind of the producers, the directors, the publishers would be there queuing up to sort of like, you know, promote this stuff and, and kind of publish it, but it's, it's not really kind of the case, it's a little bit more convoluted there, it's more about sort of building the relationships first off, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think a lot of people, when they're starting out in the music industry, have this oversimplified notion of how it works, that there's the end user, then there's you and it's like you, all about you getting to the end user, whereas in reality this is kind of like is a big web of, of loads of people between you and that, that end user and your kind of job and as well as writing your music and trying to sell your music is, is finding out who all them little people are and, and working your way around and, and trying to meet all these people as well, because...
Yeah, like Rachel and...
Yeah.
It's kind of understanding the conventions that fit and understanding where you fit within the whole, the whole kind of landscape of, of music for picture, really.
I think for us as composers, sort of applied music composers, it's, it's been a bit of a, it took a while for us to understand where we are in terms of that ladder of where do I stand then, if, if this guy's getting all these big projects, say you've got your hand Zimmer at the top who's writing music for films, then you've got, you've got the people writing music for telly and then there's us right down at the bottom, we've just written, written some music for this little theatre production in York, this is when we started out, you know, how do, how do you progress up this ladder and it's difficult at first, I mean, I'm not quite sure when realisation sits, sinks in, but it's just all about meeting people and then you understand, okay, well that person's, person's there, why are they there? Oh, because they've done this. So for us, you know, we, we started, we started at the ground up really, so we started getting in touch with people who say were making films, they looked like they were up-and-coming filmmakers, so we contact them and say, hey, you look like, you know, you're going somewhere, you've got some talent, can we maybe do your score for this film? And, you know, you've got a little credit behind you then, even if initially, you know, you're not getting paid an awful lot, which is the way it works, but I'd encourage you if there is any composers in here, you know, from that, that perspective, make sure you do get paid something even at, at the start out, I mean, if, sure, people do like low no budget stuff now, but you know, just get them to slip you a hundred quid or whatever. We remember doing that in our first couple of little projects and it just helps, it helps in a number of ways and one of them is for us, we got, we got some money, we could then purchase more equipment or samples, which then enabled us to do bigger and better stuff and that's the way we've grown the business, sort of doing that, just purchasing shitloads of equipment here and there, so that you get to that stage where you can compete with the people who are there writing the music for the bigger productions, so that's another way of looking at it.
Yeah, on, on that point, I think it's kind of, you have to be, it is a progression and you have to be at a certain level, you have to have, not necessarily have a studio, but you have to have the equipment and the knowledge base to be able to deal with that awesome pitch that hits or, or that offer that comes in, you've got to be able to do that then, I suppose, and, and I think that's something we didn't maybe understand as fully when we first started, that it's important, the progression's almost as important as where you end up.
Definitely, yeah.
Because once you get that, that job, then the work starts, so you've got to work to get the pitch or get the job and then you have to work again, so you have to deliver and if you don't deliver, that might be not just your only opportunity, there's never just one opportunity, I don't believe, but it might be a really important contact and you know, you do a good job, more work will come from that and you'll get a name for yourself and, and build, build your profile.
I think another important point that's come out of that is when we left uni, we thought, yeah, we've got all the skills we need now, so the BBC's going to come knocking and, you know, give us 10 grand to do this, this series or whatever, but we, we had a bit of compositional knowledge when we left uni, but just because of the nature of the course that we'd done, and I know they're all different, but we had kind of virtually no production skills behind us, so we had all this knowledge and we thought, yeah, we've got, we've got our copy of Logic Studio, we can, we can now do our thing, we can get our ideas down and send them off to people and we were looking back at some of the, the initial demo CDs that we were sending out to people sort of five years ago and I really are embarrassing, not just some of the names, there was some dodgy names on there, but just the quality of production is, was, was nothing compared to what it needed to be in order to, to be playable on TV and I know there's a lot of sort of rubbish music on telly from sort of whatever, royalty-free libraries and whatever, but they're of, they're of a level, so you need to sort of have that production skill as well as the compositional skill, so that's something to, to focus on, I'd say.
Yeah. Okay, I think what you're saying is, you know, understanding your own, your own value as a producer, composer, when, you know, at the outset, you know, David was talking about getting paid something, whether it was a bag of chips or a hundred pounds or whatever, just, you know, make sure you don't undervalue yourselves, because you've, you've obviously got a talent if you're doing something like this, so that talent is something that you should be shouting about.
Can I chip in a bit there as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I met these two a couple of years ago and I was really, really impressed not only by the music but by this kind of willingness to ask the questions in like, okay, then you know more than us, what, what do you know, let's have a meeting, let's do it, friendly, professional, you know, you just thought, I can trust you with a job, I could do that, I could really, you know, and there's so many people who are trying to do this, that I think there is a real mix of talent, I'll, you know, I'll talk about it in, in my bit later on, but I think, oh, the thing about getting paid, I think psychologically it's really important as well, that if you're getting paid, then you feel like a professional, even if it is a little bit of money, you feel like, okay, you know, because you, it helps in your negotiation, you're like, you know what, I know your budget's only 500 quid, but if, if we're providing all the music for your 500 pound film, then give us a hundred quid of it, because then we're going to deliver the music, it's going to be producible, we're going to, we're in it together, it's a collaboration, you know, it just helps, the whole negotiation, psychologically putting you in a place where you're getting, getting paid is really, is really important.
Yeah, I think that, that's very true, you have to get something from it and understand that it is, it's like from the get-go, it's like you're not friends, you're colleagues, you know, and it's kind of, you can still get on really well with these colleagues, but yeah, you've got to get something from it and, and it's valuing the music, you know, I mean, of, of all the times to be saying to value the music, you know, it, it's even more important to do so and so, so yeah, try and get something from, from that.
Also something else I'd like to ask is, when you started out, it's more about how you, how you got where you are, what would you say the three key elements were that you, you kind of focused on? Or skills?
Okay.
Or qualifications, whichever you felt that's...
Well, I'd say, going back to kind of, in terms of actual nuts and bolts, you have to do something or, or pick, pick an area, kind of specialise, I would say. Now, it's kind of, I'm kind of contradicting myself in, in one way in that if you're a media composer, a composer for film or animation or games, within that, you're going to get all kinds of different varied jobs, you might be asked to sort of like play a Hawaiian nose flute on a little iPhone app one week and then the next week you'll be sort of banging massive tints on a big sort of trailer, trailer track, so there is absolute variety in that, but you kind of, you've got to find a specialist area and something that you enjoy, I would say, we, we enjoy kind of what we do now, the kind of, a lot of the percussion side of things and something that you're good at, you have to be kind of good at it and, and become, become better, because there's always people out there that are, that are better than you.
Yeah, we're always conscious that, you know, there's, there's quite a few people that are better than us and we want to be as good as them, so it's always a striving thing to be as good as them, why are they better than you, what, what have they been through that makes them better than you?
Creative envy is like a big drive, it's kind of like, god, that guy, that guy over there.
We've got some peers now who work on similar projects to us and we're kind of mates with them, because it, you know, it helps to be in this industry, because you, you kind of can bounce ideas off one another, you can say, okay, what are you working on? And we're working on, and, and we're always getting really jealous of them, because they're working on stuff, it's like, well, why aren't we doing that? But it, it works both ways, so we're, we're working on projects that they're not working on, so...
So they're doing something cool and go, how have they done that? And then the next day or that afternoon, it's like, right, we're going to figure out how they've done that and kind of do it and then do it better, so that's, that's one thing, that's a long one thing, but get, get good at your area, I think, with expertise.
Okay, and last thing before we move on, what would you say was the holy grail then in your genre or your composing? The holy grail of contracts, commissions?
Oh, contracts, oh right, ooh, well, there's different strands of what we do now, so like I said with the production music and, right for the bigger trailers, obviously the holy grail for us is with the production music and the trailer music albums, is to have something hit on a really big production, so a really big trailer, I mean, we annoyingly, we've just recently missed out on getting, landed one of our tracks on the Predator's trailer, the new Robert Rodriguez Predator's trailer, so I mean, something like that for us is, that's, that's where we're aiming at now, it's the high-end stuff, because that's where the bigger, the bigger sync fees are and obviously the back end as well on that sort of thing is, is good, but that's, that's, that's one aspect of what we do. The other aspect is working on sort of maybe feature films, so sort of a really good quality British feature film, that's one of our aspirations, I mean, we're working on several at the moment, but maybe higher budget feature films, so that kind of thing, but yeah, I mean, there's a few, there's a few.
I think in that answer, right, it's kind of, there's, there's multiple and it's divergent.
Okay, right, well, let's, let's move on, we'll kind of, we'll steadily work our way down the sofas. Now, what I suggest is that any, any of you that have got like any questions for Dave and Joe, just keep, just keep us stored up and then after we've heard from everybody, we'll just have a bit of a bunfight and just here, you know, just open the floor and just get it all out. So let's, I want to move on to Dan, okay? Now, obviously we're talking more on like composing, sync etc, but as I explained at the beginning, there's, there's two main copyrights to music and recording is one and it's just as relevant as the composition copyright. Now, Dan works for the PPL, who represent more the recording, but even more so, and it's something I want to discuss in a little while, is the, the internet etc and how it has affected both of the copyrights and all the businesses associated with it, so we'll hand it over to Dan and he can tell you all about it.
Just out of interest actually, just to, it'd be quite interesting to see all you guys, who, who's come across PPL before, so just raise your hands. Okay, that's, that's a bit of an expected, that's good, that's okay. Yeah, yeah, I mean, essentially, PPL, we, we're the, the UK music licensing company for recorded copyright, so what we're doing, we're, we're licensing music that record labels or rights holders register with PPL to broadcasters and companies like sort of shops, pubs, clubs, restaurants, anything like that across the UK, so on that front you've got about 70,000 odd companies and then you've got where the majority of the revenue comes from the major broadcasters, so obviously one of the biggest being the BBC. So essentially how it works is, and this is sort of several crucial steps along the way, we, we deal with performers and record labels, so the first step in order for us to be able to licence music to a broadcaster, the, the record label has to have registered that repertoire with us, that's crucial in a few ways. One, if, if that, that track wants to become eligible for the charts, it needs to be registered with PPL, which is obviously important, everybody, you know, generally aspires to, to get some chart success with their music, so you need to make sure that that's, that's done initially. And two, once those tracks are registered, another thing, and I've come across it quite a lot and Pete and I were talking about it earlier, when, when a label or a rights holder registers a track with PPL, this is sort of second step, and that is becoming a PPL record company member, and that's all about filling in some paperwork basically, that doesn't always get done, and what happens there is, some of you will have heard of the ISRC codes, we distribute those ISRC codes to rights holders, and I'm using the words rights holders because a lot of, these days a lot of people are releasing their own tracks, so they're not necessarily a, a record company in the sort of traditional sense of the term, they would get their, write their ISRC code and then believe that, okay, I'm, I'm registered as a, a record company with PPL, the problem is until we've got a signature on a piece of paper saying, yes, you can, this is, you can mandate or we mandate you to licence our music, it's actually uncontrolled by PPL, so there's a sort of problem there that follows on, is the performers won't get paid and neither will the label and you'd be very surprised at some, how big, some of the bigger indie labels that haven't been registered with us and sort of had to spend...
Got any examples?
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't. As much, I knew you'd ask that question, but no, unfortunately I can't do that. So from a performer point of view, you know, but PPL are a not-for-profit company, so once those tracks are with us and they're getting airplay, we're collecting money on those tracks, that those licenses are paying us money to play that music, that means that we're collecting money for the performers and for the labels and we split that money 50/50 between both parties. If the performer isn't registered with us, it sits basically with PPL, gathering interest, doing nothing, and we have to, we have to find that performer and give them that money and that's not always as easy as it sounds. I manage a team at PPL who, we, we have, there's a pot of about four, five million pounds that we're sat on of unclaimed royalties, we know who those performers are, but trying to actually get them to, or get hold of them and research, find out who they are, where they are, and then making that phone call at the end and saying, oh hey, we've, we've got 15 grand for you, whatever it be, you know, and they're just kind of like, um, where's the catch? No, don't worry, we're not calling from Nigeria, we're not some bank in Nigeria offering you, you know, you haven't won the lottery or anything like that. It's very difficult to get rid of that money, but it's an important task and this year alone, we've managed to, just in six months, we've managed to free up about 1.5 million of that, which is, you know, is pretty good going, so we'll continue to do that. But yeah, I mean, I, I guess, you know, a lot of confusion is, I mean, I've only been at PPL for about a year and I was brought into PPL to essentially look after proactive performer recruitment, it's something that we've not really done before, so my job is to basically be out there and, you know, go, go, go approach the performers and say, hey, you know, you're either going to get airplay or you're already getting airplay, you know, you need to register with PPL. And the confusion that I was very surprised about, it was quite naive to the industry, was the PRS thing, you know, a lot of people would say, I'm, I'm registered with PRS, so I'm okay, and it sort of took me back a little bit, I was like, oh, right, you do realise that you can be registered with both, you know, PRS and PPL are two, probably two of the easiest forms of income you'll get in the music industry, as in, once you're registered, so long as you get in airplay, from the PPL's point of view and in, you know, and from PRS, but also they're going to cover your live stuff as well, you've got two income streams that will come through to you, you know, and from our point of view to the performer and to the record label, you're just releasing your music, getting it out there, goes on the radio, we'll pay you money for it, and so we've had a bit of an uphill struggle trying to get that message out there, you know, as I said, a lot of people just hadn't heard of us, you know, we're, I guess we're a little bit smaller than PRS, but we're, we're trying our best. So yeah, I mean, you know, to register as a performer is really straightforward, it's very simple, a couple of forms, you just go to our website that's up there, fill out the paperwork and you, you become a PPL performer member. If you're with, so if you're not self-releasing and you're with another label, you know, it's always important to make sure that when that label registers your repertoire, that they're crediting you as performers, as contributors on those tracks, because this is why, why we end up with this pot of money, you know, where we don't always have that and we have to try and find out who those people were that belonged on those tracks, so yeah, that's, that's definitely an important thing to, to do.
To just butt in there, when, when Dan says registering the tracks, if your contribution on a performance, your contribution could be, if you do anything, even if you're making the tea in the studio or if you're playing bass or if you're singing backing vocals, all of those different contributions can be registered to each of the recordings, so, so you know, whatever your role was in making or performing on that recording, then there is an element of income that may trickle its way back to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, from, from our point of view, when we're, when we're talking about the performance on a track, we will, will pay anybody who makes an audible contribution, so from a hand clap, you know, to the lead vocals, so as long as that, that there's a, a signature on that, a sound of what you've done, then you're entitled to revenue and it's illegal... And it's a legal entitlement, so, yeah, you know, you just asked me a question there.
Who decides the amount? Is that the label, the artist, you guys?
As in the amounts we pay out.
The percentage is broken between the artists and if you decide, okay, he's played a bass track, comments, he gets that amount.
And what we've got, we've got, from the performer point of view, we've got three categories of performer. We have the contracted featured performer, so this is the main artist on that track, or if it's a band, you know, that would be split equally between four, three, how many of them there are. So, that's sixty-five percent that generally goes to contracted featured performers. You've then got other featured and non-featured, and that's up to twelve percent, and then non-featured, seven percent. So, your non-featured tend to be your session musicians that aren't really part of the band, as it were, so they've come and done a performance on that track. But the actual payment, the revenues that come into PPL, once we've taken our costs away, and it's important to note, we just take costs out of the money that comes in just so that we can operate as a company. We don't make any profit, we don't keep any interest that's accrued on the money. So, it's basically split right down the middle, fifty-fifty. We've only started representing performers since nineteen ninety-six. Prior to that, performers weren't or didn't have rights to equitable remuneration, so they now do. And up until recently, we've actually still held money back until, back from nineteen ninety-six, so, which is quite a lot of money, we're trying to get rid of very quickly, if we can, so.
My dad's best friend's a drummer and his first drumming job was drumming on My Boy Lollipop.
Okay.
And he got paid, he got paid two shillings or something, you know, but he had no, he found out, PPL contacted, you know, through various musicians union, who were very active when they first started making, having this right to collect the income. He found out that his income was due to him and he was like, well, how do I, you know, how do I prove that I was the drummer? And he had the, like, the ticket, the, you know, here's your two shillings, the wage slip still from nineteen sixty-three. So, yeah, he got his money.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, that's whatever, thirty years after the event, I'm sure you're not still keeping hold of that money, I think there was probably a time limit.
We had, because from a performer point of view, it's only been since ninety-six that we've collected money for them. Prior to that, all the money would go to the labels and there'd be some sort of spaceship payments made by the labels to the performers where they didn't really have to justify how much they were given to those performers. We have just recently done a golden repertoire project where, you know, any of those tracks that were done in the sort of sixties, seventies, eighties, that have had airplay since ninety-six, you know, trying to find out who, you know, and it's quite difficult because back in those days, you know, session musicians, they'd probably go and do three or four recordings a day, they'd be all over the place and you could say to them, you know, where were you? Or, you know, were you on, oh, I can't remember, I did loads of stuff back then, you know, so that's quite, it was quite a challenge to get that money sort of reunited with those performers. I mean, it's much easier now because we get, you know, we get a really, really accurate reporting, especially from the broadcasters, you know, what's being played and, you know, we've got a good idea of who were on that track. But having said that, from a session musician's point of view, it's still not as easy as it should be, you know, we don't always get the accurate lineup on a track and you can imagine when you've got an orchestra playing on a track, you know, that can be a nightmare sometimes trying to get, because those guys are just going to the studio, they're getting paid their session fee and then they're going and it's sort of like, you know, nobody's necessarily made a record of who it was that played on that recording, so, yeah.
It's a symptom of the death of label copy and great artwork.
Yeah, that's true.
Also, on that line, how do the PPL, can you explain to us how the PPL go about sampling what is actually broadcast on labels? Obviously, on the bigger radio stations, they log what they play, but for smaller, sort of more independent stations, how do you go about sampling that data or gathering your data?
It's a requirement of any broadcaster to supply us with reporting. The smaller the broadcaster, the less accurate that becomes, in all fairness, but we do get reporting from all of those. The problem comes when you've got, it's not so much on the broadcast side, it's with the seventy-odd thousand companies, you know, the shops, you know, your Boots, your Sainsbury's, your local cafe, those kind of places, you know, they don't report on what music gets played unless, you know, you get every now and then some sort of fanatical hairdressers that plays one type of music, they love that artist, and they will write in on a piece of paper, you know, hey, we only play this. And we've got that then, so we can make sure that that artist and that label get paid for that particular, from that company, so their license fee gets reunited with those people. But what we have to do with the rest of them is essentially look at the cross-section of airplay and broadcast, so radio, TV, online, and look at what is being played and then sort of split it up like that. You know, it's not the ideal solution. We are looking at investing in some digital fingerprinting, so the likes of Shazam, that kind of technology, and we're talking to a couple of companies at the moment to put that technology into place, so we can try it and see how it works. You know, it's all about, what we always have to be mindful of at PPL is that any money we spend, it's not our money, it's performers' money and it's labels' money. So, we have to make sure that we're totally justified in everything we do, you know, we have to be very clear on what we're doing and we have to get approval from all the members to spend that money. And something like that, it's a very expensive technology, especially to roll that out to seventy thousand licensees, so we have to be careful with everything we do. But at the moment, you know, it's still, it's fairly accurate, you know, it's not miles off, so.
Is it a similar system to the PRS and how they do their data collection as well? Do you use the same system or?
I think it's a little bit more, they'll probably shoot me for saying this, but it's a little bit more accurate, I think.
It's more accurate than the?
Yeah, I mean, the radio side, it's probably about the same, yeah. The radio side is probably about, exactly about the same, but PRS have the difficulty, because we don't cover live, the PRS are covering live music, you know, that's quite hard for them, those guys to administer, you know, and they're relying on lots of paperwork. We don't have that sort of task to deal with, you know, generally speaking, we're just getting direct reporting from the broadcasters because we're just covering essentially the performance of that recorded.
So, just quickly get in there, you know, the performance of the recordings, say DJs in clubs, is that a similar thing? How do you get your data from big nightclubs like the Warehouse Project or something?
Not easy.
So, you still try?
Yeah, I mean, we try, we've got people out there that go in and sort of do sort of random checking and things like that. But, yeah, I mean, you know, there's also the whole argument that they don't necessarily pay enough and because we don't get accurate reporting from them, you know, it's always, it can be quite difficult, but, you know, pushing and trying.
I think one thing to take from that is the kind of, the anecdotal stories about, you know, if you're the hairdressers or the cafe or you're in a bar and you hear music that you, you know, tell them, or you should write to them because if you really like this music, because the thing with the way, the sampling reporting is that inevitably, despite any effort at fairness, the distributions are usually weighted towards major label performers because they're the people that are getting paid, they're, they are the people that get paid the majority of the time on radio and so, you know, times that across all of the other days aren't being sampled and they're getting a huge chunk of it, whereas, so if you, I know a friend of ours that manages Mr Scruff, somebody told him that Mr Scruff's Chicken in a Box track, Chicken in a Box?
Yeah.
Was being used, was being played as the opening track by Paul Oakenfold, when he was DJing as the opening act for U2 on the worldwide tour. So, he said, excuse me, PRS, I wondered whether there was anything due to me? You know, it's not a live performance, it's a record being played, but there's no support act, U2 are filling stadiums with fifty-two-hundred thousand people on a three-hundred-day tour, any chance of any money? And he got some money, he got a lot of money.
Yeah, he's got a bit right too as well, I mean, absolutely, I totally agree with you on that.
I think that's really nice, that, you know, that kind of, yeah, my bar plays
Yeah, yeah.
This kind of music and that's taken note of, I think that's quite heartening.
Yeah.
Very good. Also, just a quick note, any questions from the floor there, just put your hand up and wait for the radio mic to arrive in your hands, because we're recording, so. The hands shut up, so we can hear on tape.
How far do you investigate claims of the artists themselves? So, they register on your website and they state that they've done this, this and this. Do you ever investigate that further or do you take people's word?
Oh, no, we investigate on both sides, so we take what the performers give, I mean, we require a certain level of evidence from a performer that they've.
Like what?
Well, label copy or album artwork, something that's crediting them to be.
But again, I mean, the reason why I'm asking is in a situation that we're involved in, I performed with an artist, I wrote a guy some, a load of music, he put some lyrics on it, it got, we got the leads and writing with it, we've got radio on airplay, met PRS there, registered with PRS, they never investigated anything at all.
Has it registered your word for it and that was it?
Pretty much, we filled in a form and they took that off. He then went and took all the demo versions, uploaded them to iTunes, bypassed me completely and registered all the things in his name with PRS and no one ever checked.
Right.
So, basically, it's my impression of PRS was, you log in, and I know you're PPL, but this was the PRS, that we logged in, we filled in a form and they went, okay, and nothing's ever come of it. And I was asking, do you guys investigate further? Do you actually go and contact the labels and you actually go and visit, you know?
Yeah, we do, I mean, we, you know, it's in everybody's interests, PPL, to make sure that both parties are, that accept any claim that comes through. We have a claim system there for performers and anybody that comes and says, you know, I mean, we get it quite a lot, we get a lot of false claims, you know, and that's where you have to be very vigilant and make sure that every claim that comes through is investigated, you investigate with the label. You find as many people as you can who are involved with that recording, you know, speak to producers, anybody involved and say, you know, was this person on that track? Because otherwise, you know, there's several tracks where we've had four or five different drummers claim to be on the single recording and it's like, well, one of you guys did it, so I need to find out which one it was. So, yeah, we take that stuff very seriously and investigate as far as we can.
Cool, so, I think we'll use that point to move along, thanks, Dan, and hear from Rachel, all about her business and generally the synchronized business, synchronization business as it stands at present. And then maybe afterwards, we can have a few more questions from the audience here and we can just talk about a lot of the issues and try and get the effects of the internet on all of this as well and see what your thoughts are. Okay, Rachel, next one.
Hello, my name's Rachel Wood, my company is Woodwork Music. We are a synchronization licensing agency for the most part, so the main part of the business is representing catalogues from, mainly from independent record labels, also a couple of independent publishers and also some direct relationships with artists and management companies. So, the way I explain it generally is that if you sign a deal with a major record label or a major publisher, you have a department that looks after synchronization licensing for you as an income stream. And if you sign to a little label or a little publisher, then they might have somebody that has a few contacts and a few ad agencies or the guy that does the music on, whatever, but they don't have the huge database of contacts that we have, all the relationships we have, they don't have the experience in the negotiation, so we handle that part of that business for them. And we take all of that catalogue, we get to know it as though it was our own and then we try and sell it to people in the visual media industry. So, mainly in the UK, we focus on advertising, finally getting our head around computer games a little bit after the event. In the States, there is much more visual media to go at, like these guys were saying, there's the trailer music, there's film, there's TV, which is covered by blanket licenses over here, so you can't really pitch to it. So, anything that's moving, that needs some music, basically, and we work on a commission-only basis for the most part, certainly as agents, we work as commission-only. So, the work is entirely speculative, there's a lot of work and you may or may not get the deal. I've been doing it for about ten or eleven years now, before people really knew what synchronization licensing was. Now, a lot of people have got at least some awareness of it as an income stream. I worked at a record label in Manchester, doing it, they had the kind of catalogue that people were approaching them and asking for their music to be used and they kind of slightly freaked out every time they got a request because they didn't really know what to do with it, they didn't know how much to ask for, they didn't know how to maximize these opportunities. So, they got me in, not because I knew anything, but because they thought I was, I could learn fast, so I did and ran that department for them. And then, like other labels, they hit hard times and I, we went our separate ways and I set up Woodwork six years ago. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's important to understand the differences between the roles in synchronization, just as an absolute basic. The job I do is not a very common job, really, as an agent, there is a very small amount of agents working in the UK, there's lots of agents working in the States because of the volume of visual media being so much bigger in the States. So, somebody doing my job in the States could make a very good living because of the amount, the volume of music that's needed in CSI, Grey's Anatomy, all of those TV shows need four or five pieces of music per week for forty weeks a year. Over here, all of that TV income is really taken away from us and certainly doesn't exist on the same level. I mean, I've had to explain to American labels, you know, why they're not seeing any income or indeed why they're getting eighty-five pounds per thirty seconds instead of ten thousand dollars aside, which is what they're used to seeing. And it just comes down to, you know, the fact that those TV shows are being syndicated around the world and being sold on DVDs and sold as downloads and broadcast on aeroplanes and whatever.
When you say aside there, you mean?
Aside, so this is all, so this is the recording, you know, the recorded industry, the recorded music industry and, you know, the publishing. So, the publishing is the underlying copyright. If I do a version of Can't Get You Out Of My Head and I sell a million copies, I doubt it, if I sell a million copies of Can't Go Out Of My Head, Kathy Dennis, the writer of Can't Get You Out Of My Head, is earning her publishing income because she wrote that song and Kylie's not getting anything because they're not buying Kylie's version of it, they're buying my version of it. But if Kylie's buying a record, that's the record, like, the record label here, am I Kylie, the publisher, Kathy Dennis, writer, underlying composition, two separate things. The confusion comes, I think, when lots of people write their own material and so it's one, it's one person in control of it all, but actually, always think of it in terms of old-school writers, performers, much easier. So, in synchronization licensing, you're always licensing both copyrights. So, I've lost deals before when the publishers have not cleared the, I've got the deal on the table, we've negotiated the fee, it has to go to the publisher for clearance, the publisher just dilly-dallys and we've lost the deal. So, you have to get both sides cleared in synchronization licensing. It is a license to use that music, all of that music, the master recording and the publishing, so both sides.
When you say that you go to a fee, is this a one-off fee or is it some sort of proportionate return?
It varies wildly, but usually it's a one-off fee for that usage, so it's for that license. So, the license can be anything, the license can be, but generally what you're doing is you're licensing it for a specific usage, so background in this programme, in this scene of this programme, for this many seconds, in these territories, for this amount of time, ten years, lifetime, what's the other thing, and the fee. So, but the fee is dependent on all of those things. So, in advertising, one-year UK TV and internet, and then if they, they say, oh, and we want to add cinema, that's a new licence, a new fee, but again, it's a one-off fee. There would then be for, in advertising, there would then be an additional performance and broadcasting income due every time that advert is played on the television, but there's no PPL due on advertising, due on the television. But there is if that, if it's in TV and it's being broadcast on the television. But I don't see any of that, I'm the agent. So, the, I'm trying to think about what else to.
How would you cost out? How would you say for instance, I don't know if everyone remember it, but Habitat used to have a really annoying website where a bit of music came on the minute you logged on. And how would you, how would you cost out a fee for use of a bit of music on a website?
Well, it's a combination really of what's gone before and what, how much have they got, how much you think that piece of music is worth? You know, I represent some catalogues that are, the majority of the music that I represent is fairly under the radar, independent music, it's kind of, if it's well-known, it's well-known in a kind of six-music kind of way, rather than a, you know, a kind of Radio One mainstream kind of way. than a, you know, a kind of Radio 1 mainstream kind of way. But I do represent some bigger catalogues. I represent Rough Trade Publishing, I've got the Violent Femmes catalogue, which is Blister In The Sun, and, and I represent the Unidisc catalogue, which is things like Last Night DJ Saved My Life. So those copyrights are going to be more valuable than Hibbs And Nibb Down The Road, who's an amazing producer, but it's, nobody's ever heard of it. So all of those things come into play in the negotiation, really. Website usage is a really interesting one, actually, because it's, it's, people are still going a little bit with, with website usage fees. Luckily, quite early on, I had some really, really good precedent set with music being licensed into websites, so I could go, well, actually, I'm afraid that, you know, we've, a similar level artist has, has had their music used very similarly and we've been able to charge this, so that people aren't choking on the chips when they're going, how much? It's only on a website. And you're like, well, is this your main campaign now? You know, are you, instead of the TV campaign, are you using, is this, you know, ask the questions. This brings me to the biggest thing, really, is that, is that my job is not about knowing about the music industry, the music industry has to know about me and then I'll decide whether I want to work with you, but I need to know, to do my job properly, I need to know about computer games, the different, the million different TV things, trailer companies, how the film industry works, how all of those industries work and how music is chosen within those industries, not just the people, but understand what pressures, delays, fees, everything, that it's, it's about understanding those, those industries and, and the changing nature of them, you know. I think the computer games thing's interesting as well because the, I had kind of done quite a lot of computer games licensing at Grand Central because it had this kind of, we had quite a lot of driving, hip-hop, instrumental stuff, gets licensed to computer games all the time. When I started Woodwork, I had quite a lot of singer-songwriter, pretty, some disco, it's not, to me, that was like, that's not computer games music. I mean, this is, you know, and I was aiming my, my focus squarely advertising, so I was finding music that was, I felt, appropriate for advertising, not the same thing. There's a little bit of overlap, maybe, but especially at that time, five, six years ago, we were just coming into the, you know, folk music fashion in advertising and pounding driving music, I didn't go near it. But now computer games are developing and the market is widening and there's a lot more games using a lot more varied music and games are using music to distinguish themselves and so there's always going to be the driving games with the driving music, but there's a lot more games that are using very classical score stuff or, you know, Little Big Planet, which is kind of quite cutesy, lo-fi advertising music, really, and so...
It's funny enough you should say that because that's, that, the Little Big Planet, the first one anyway, I'm not sure about the second, that's Daniel Pemberton, the composer who, who works on that, and he's kind of like synonymous with, with advertising kind of in a way. So that's kind of shows you how the landscape of the games industry, along with the music industry, is changing and, you know, he's kind of like got a monopoly on that kind of, that his sound is kind of like, is Little Big Planet, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, as, as composers, what, what, do you approach it differently if you're going to be pitching for a game or, or a film trailer, as you say, for the to?
Yeah, I mean, I think like Rachel said, you, you've got, it's, you've got to know the, the pressures and what is more attractive to the producer or the, the music supervisor who's working on a game as opposed to kind of a documentary or a, or those things like that. And, and it can be tricky to find out because these are things that are kind of on IMDB or, you know, any kind of websites, they're not listed, you've got to kind of like, you kind of get to know the person and understand what, what they do on a day-to-day basis, really.
Yeah, do your research.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I know, Rachel, you, you have a roster of, a roster of producers or composers that you can give a, throw a pitch at. I mean, how, what criteria do you use when you choose to work with people like that?
Well, I, I mean, we were talking about working together for a while, it took me a long time to switch from, from licensing music that's already existing, which is the main body of what I do, to get into composition. And honestly, it is still very, very much in its infancy, we've done a handful of deals for composition. Because it's a different set of contacts, actually, it's a, you know, I kind of went into it when we first started talking, I was like, oh yeah, yeah, be easy. And it's a very different set of contacts, it's a very, there are, there are people who generally work on adverts that are, the adverts that need licensed music and there are people and producers and brands that work on adverts that need composed music and sometimes there's an overlap. But actually, what I decided to do, to, to, you know, follow your own advice, you know, I'm always telling people to focus and I think we'll, you know, if anyone asks us our advice, we'll always say, focus on some strengths and going for it, because there's no point, it was, it's a small business, don't try and do everything. But the, the, I decided that I would focus on, if you like this band, then they can do something for you. So actually, I don't have composers that are just composers. I have whittled down the bands that I work with and through getting to know them and getting to know their style and getting to know, because it's a very different set of skills to be in a band, to be a composer. You, you know, in a band, it's your music, you're in charge of it, it's your creative vision. As a composer, especially in advertising, and so, I mean, production music, I think, is slightly different in that, you know, there's, you've got a theme and you're kind of allowed to get...
There's parameters.
Yeah. But in advertising, I've just done one, and you have to listen to people who know nothing about music telling you, telling you that your piece of music isn't good enough and, and then react to it and then deliver something different by the end of the day. So it's a very different skill set to being in a band. Being in a band is, 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 is much freer, much more genuinely creative as a composer. This is, this is being a, a, a jobbing composer and you have to have incredible composition talent, you have to be able to understand what is needed for this to work visually as well as in an audio sense, and you have to understand what kind of visual clues you're giving with your audio all the time. And, you know, home studio, incredible time discipline, you know...
They all start to learn to speak their language a bit, don't you?
Yeah.
So when they say, it needs to be more squidgey, you've got to know what they mean.
Or I wanted to sound happy but a little bit sad.
Say, Rachel, if you ever have the temptation to just go back to somebody whose, who track you represent and say, Lord, it'd be much better if you weren't so wobbly with your vocal on this bit, or if there was more guitar in that bit, then I reckon we could sort of sign this picture.
We sometimes do that with, 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 with albums that we, that are like, that are ticking all the boxes apart from the locals are too low down in the mix or there's some, you know, it's blue language throughout, then we will go back and we will ask for instrumental versions, clean versions, versions with the percussion higher up in the mix. But we don't do, we don't do that, you know, we consider, every, every release that comes into us, and we get a lot of releases, we work with fifteen labels, you know, we're dealing with a lot of, of music, so we listen to every release and we go, right, is this a, is this a priority release for us? And if so, what, is, does it go out now? Does it, what, you know, where are we going to sell it to? Is it computer games, is it trailers? And why is it going to fail? What are they going to think when we send it out to them? Why is it going to fail? Why is it going to succeed? What are the strong points? And then let's get different mixes. I think that's, you know, definitely getting different mixes where, where appropriate. But, you know, be careful what you ask for because then their expectation is super high. You know, I have to deal with a lot of people going, why aren't you on my number? You're like, well, you know, there's no more adverts being made than there ever were and there's a lot more music out there trying to get the adverts, so you, you know, you do the math. It's a bit, it's, it's tough, it's tough, but yeah, we do do it because we, we want to give the music that we've, that we've got the best possible chance.
Okay.
Yeah.
What, what would you, sorry to butt in there. What would you say to somebody in, in today that had some tracks they wanted to send you? What, what criteria would you use to say, yes, they're great, I'll represent them or, no, sorry, go back to the drawing board?
For me personally, at the moment, we have got only one gap that needs to be filled. So if you've got world mu, interesting, eclectic, world music, send it. If you've got anything else, we don't need it. If you are talking about getting music into any other visual medium and sending it out yourselves, I would say you really, really have to do your research and then focus on where you think your music fits naturally. Because there's no point, if you're starting from here with no money and, and, and a limited amount of time, then just play to your strengths, at least till you've got a bit of money in the bank and then you can start exploring a bit more. That's exactly what these two guys did. You know, I think it's two, there is some other piece of music that is as good, better, worse, whatever, but there's another piece of music they can use. So you have to make it, you have to have the piece of music they want, you have to make it as easy as possible for them to licence it and, and understand, pitch them the music that they're going to use. Watch CSI, you know, watch it. I've just, that's what my two employees are doing today, they're watching CSI Miami so that they can get their heads around what they should be pitching. Nice job.
Yeah.
But it's, but you know, it means that, I, we have got, you know, I'm spending all this time developing relationships with people, I don't want my staff sending singer-songwriter music to the people, you know, it would be a disaster. They would think, what the frig she thinks she's doing?
That's totally right, it's like, that's what we do. We don't, we don't so much watch TV as we listen to it. So we're going, right, what are we watching?
Won't you stop? You can't stop. It's torture.
You can never enjoy anything, ever, never.
You know, so you go, oh, that's crap, why does that, why has that been picked? Oh, that's really good, why has that been picked? And then you go, you look at the composer, you look at the music supervisor in the end credits, you go, hmm, okay, all right, we're going to go Google them and check them out and why is this and who, who do they work with? Yeah, yeah.
I think as a starting point, if you're doing this as a, as a, as a, a new business development within an existing publishing company or as musicians or as a record label, just hive off like two or three days just to get your head around the world and, and after that two or three days, things will start to make a little bit more sense. You'll find the same names coming up again and again and again, you'll find the same kind of music coming up again and again and again, you know. I, I do actually represent the Anvil catalogue, but I doubt whether I'm ever going to get a licence for it, even with all of the great press of Anvil, you know, the movie, because it doesn't, it's too aggressive, it's too genre-specific. If somebody wants eighties heavy metal by an unknown band that's, that's recently got a bit of credit, I've got that music, but it's not the music that's, that I pitch all the time. What I pitch all the time is, you know, beautiful, lo-fi, melodic, folki-esque music or electronic driving, you know, there's, there's things that you will hear the same kind of music being used all the time because the same kind of music works with visuals or doesn't work with visuals. And you are a slave to the visuals, you are working to make that relationship work, you are not trying to sell your record. It's a different function.
Do you, is it detrimental, if you're, you're not sort of, you know, you're not saying essentially that you are just a composer and you are making some decent music, you've got a track that you think's quite interesting to listen to. Is it detrimental sending without vocals or do you think, you know...
Well, it depends where you're sending it to, it depends where, it depends where you're sending it to.
Say, say...
And it depends what the lyrics are.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so without lyrics, I'm saying if we produce something that's, that's sort of dead rocky, dead driving and we're going for the, you know, we're going for the right area and we're thinking that this is right, but we've just not got the lyrics, this would just...
Doesn't matter, I mean, I used to, no, I don't think so, I mean, do you do vocals on your music?
Sometimes, only, only when asked, yeah. But I, I think with that, I, I, I don't know, I'd be tempted just, it, it's for them to go, oh, this is cool, but let's drop out the vocals. If they like the track, they'll like the track. So it's kind of, if, if the track sounds like really awesome and right for a pitch without vocals and that's the best it can sound, then send that rather than to like one with vocals, it's, it'll be a different mix totally without the vocals.
We, we work with like quite a few libraries and I've seen a lot of libraries, if they're asking for submissions, saying, definitely no vocals on this because you just can't place it if it's got vocals on it sometimes. So, I mean, a lot of stuff that Rachel plays will have vocals because of that advertising edge, but for instance, if it's underscored, if it's going to be played under a scene, you don't want vocals on it.
And even when you're, even when I'm licensing, the, the, again, if we go back to the, what do you ask the musicians or the artists to submit to you, I'll always get instrumental versions of everything and it's, and, and again, this is a relatively recent revelation to me, I thought, especially in US TV, because it's kind of cheesy, so there's an advert, you know, there's a, there's a, there's a scene about, you know, a couple breaking up and the track is about a couple breaking up. They really like to lay it on thick, you know, there's no subtlety in those...
Like lyrical reference in the actual track, yeah.
Lyrical references that match exactly what's going on in the scenes all the time. But within that scene, they will still want, they'll still ask you for the instrumental version even though they want that lyric because they don't want all of the lyric, they want somebody to talk somewhere in that scene. And it's much easier for them if they can drop out to an instrumental mix. So they're actually licensing two, you're not going to charge them twice the licence fee, but they're actually charging twi, they're actually licensing two pieces of music for me or they're, they're receiving the vocal and, and the instrumental. So the instrumental is certainly not a detrimental thing, but again, think what you're aiming it at. And, you know, instrumentals are much more useful and expensive in trailers and incidental little bits of music in the background of an advert is not, whereas a lyrical reference in an advert that will, has nailed, every big advert I've had has been because of a lyrical reference. Blister In The Sun, Costa's peer advert with people hiding from the sun. And, oh, a genius move on the part of the advertising agency. And the, um, Mastercard advert with Finley Brown, which was, they wanted a song about coming home and actually the song's about refugees coming home, doesn't matter, it just says, come home, girl, I love you, please come home. And so it's, it's, you know, it's, the, the lyrical, they nailed it in those cases, they wanted that lyrical reference. And they are the hardest things to nail, lyrical searches, I think.
I was just thinking, you got a place in, didn't you, with the, I've forgotten the name, Working For A Nuclear...
Yeah.
That was instrumental, wasn't it, on that Hovis advert?
Yeah.
I remember that, so that was a successful...
Well, they did the composition.
Yeah, a successful example of, of one of your sort of acts doing an instrumental version on a...
Yeah.
On a successful trailer.
And the thing, and that, the, the, we, we got that because they needed somebody, I don't know, remember the advert with the little kid running through history, basically, a big, long advert, and they needed somebody that, that could do score and then could do rock convincing, in the convincing transition. And they kind of, as a band, that's kind of what they do. Oh, they said they've got those elements within tracks anyway, so it was a relatively easy...
Really good fact, yeah.
But it's a really, it was a, it was a relatively easy pitch, we were up against some really big artists. So that was, that's a, that's a particular, particularly, when you beat somebody really well-known, that's the best, that's the best bit. I beat Snow Patrol on the Mastercard advert. Yeah, yeah, that's the, that's the biggest buzz, when you get some completely unknown artist on an advert and a massive cheque and you think, great.
Gotcha.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, there's a question, Nika. Hold on, if you just hang on for the mic there, mate. Loud and proud.
And I just wanted to ask, this is a question for Rachel and Vigilante Music. Do you, you both mentioned making relationships with people, so what are these relationships based on, do you think? I mean, what do people want from you when you approach them for a relationship? Is it stamina? Do they look at you in terms of...
I just realised how that sounded. This is recorded, huh?
Good line.
So, I mean, I mean, are they looking for, oh, Jesus, I'm going to do it again, a long-term relationship. But are they looking, you know, do they think of pound signs? I mean, is it all about the money or is it all about the attitude? Like you said, when you met these guys, you liked the fact that they asked all the right questions.
I think it's, you know, the, the relationships are based on a mutual appreciation of each other's position generally. Woo, there we go. You've missed the central. So the, so it's basically about, you know, do, there's, there's lots of people I could have a, have a, a business relationship with, who am I going to spend my, my time developing the relationships with? Do I like them? Have they got good music? Do they understand the way I need to work? Do I understand the way they work? It's a mutual appreciation, I think, is what you're looking for. And I was saying to these guys before, you know, that you kind of, you develop the relationship but for the sake of your bank balance, stop short of developing friendships with everybody because the friends aren't necessarily the best ones for the, for the income.
You do favors for friends, don't you?
You do favors for friends, exactly, where the, whereas the business relationships are about somebody saying, wow, Woodward's got really good music, she always pitches really, I mean, I, I honestly, I think, I don't take any... really, I mean, I, I honestly, I think, I don't take any credit for the music that we, that we represent, I, I, I just go and cherry pick great indie labels, I'm not doing the A and R, I'm not finding those artists, I'm just going and going, yeah, I like your music, can I represent it? But what I do take, take credit for is when somebody sends me a brief and says, we're looking for this kind of music for this ad, or for this film, or for this scene, I know what they mean, and I know what kind of music within the, all of the catalogues that I represent is gonna go in that scene. And I have a reputation that means that people go, God, Rachel's nailed it again, that's an amazing search, brilliant, let's go back and ask her again. And so that's what I'm, I'm good at, and that's what a lot of my relationships, I think, are founded on. Plus, there's a lot of BS in this industry, and there is a lot of people, um, doing slightly dodgy things, there's a lot of double dipping, so there's a lot of agents that will take a fee from the film production company or the advertising agencies to, to do the search on their behalf, and then they'll go to the label and go, hey, I placed your track, give me some money. So it's like, well, who are you negotiating for in that case? There's a lot of very, um, slightly suspect, uh, business models, shall we call them? Um, and, um, and I don't play those games, I'm very straightforward, pretty, as transparent a business model as, as, as there is possible to exist. Um, and, you know, I work pretty hard, you know, and I don't, and, and, I, 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 yeah, I, I, I think I deliver. I think you have to deliver, like, what these, what these guys were saying earlier about getting yourself to a position, the job is half speculative work, and then actually the job, and the difficulty comes when you go, yeah, we can do that, yeah, we can do that, and then you go, huh, huh, you know, we've got a lot of work to do, but you do it all, and then you, you know.
Yeah. I think the key, from like composer's perspective of, of getting a relationship going, is that initial bit of work you do for that, that person, it's, it's gotta be, you know, the best work you can do, and then they'll come back to you. If you, you know, if you're kind of a, an affable kind of guy, and, you know, you get on with them, and they can, you know, you can work from their brief, then they'll come back to you.
Yeah, you've, you've got to understand the client, and they vary themselves, so you've got to understand where, where they're coming from. Like, from our perspective, looking at a client, we, all our focus is on them, because that's where the money's gonna come from, the client themselves, they might just want a quick, easy fix, so sometimes you've got to be the easy option, you've got to kind of be the go-to person, so that if you make it easy for them, you know, they'll come back again, they'll come back to you.
I think that's, um, you know, I've found, uh, again, I've, I've only been in this industry for just over a year, um, and in that time, I've got to a point where, apart from my PPL stuff, I manage a band as well. Um, one of the things that I, I think, from a PPL point of view, and from a, a band manager's point of view, um, is relationships, relationships are so important, you meet lots and lots of people, and you don't always know at the time when you meet that person, what that's gonna mean in the future. But, you know, I think, to use another euphemism, um, um, you know, put yourself out there, uh, you know, and, and get yourself around a bit, uh, you know, and that, you know, people have got to, that, that you've always got to think, you know, whoever this person is that I'm gonna be speaking to, you know, am I gonna have, is this person gonna be of use to me in the future? I don't know right now, but they may be. So it's always about being your best whenever you meet anybody, and then when you do get to that point where you're, you're, you're in that relationship, and there's something gonna be done for one of the other parties, always deliver, you know, give it everything, because impressions are really important, on how people view, and, and it is a small industry, and people talk, you know, and if you cock one thing up, because, you know, I don't know, just because you shit, or you can't be asked, uh, you don't get it right, that travels everywhere. People find out so quickly in this industry, and I think it's really important just to, you know, be, uh, always focus on relationships, people have got to like you, I think.
Another thing about the relationships is, is, um, don't pin all your hopes on one person, I've done this and been sadly disappointed in the past, you just think, they're rea- they're really gonna love my influence, and if I, you know, and you kind of go after them, and go after them, and they kind of go, go away, go away, go away. And you just think, okay, I'm gonna go away, and then at some point, hopefully in the future, they'll come to me. But actually, there's always more people that want your music as well, so don't keep pounding away at something where you're getting no response, it, there's no point, find somebody else to go and pitch your music to, spread better a little bit, you know, as well as the focus, there are more people than that person, or that, you know, that, that, that company to pitch your music to. Don't waste your time, don't bang your head against the wall, send a couple of it, send an email, send an email, not, never leave it just a week. Leave it, leave it a few weeks, send another email. And then I really think three strikes and you're out with these relationships, I really think, it's a very small world, what, the, the, the world that we're operating in, and your reputation, if you get one from some, from working for somebody else, will travel back to the person who you're trying to get, who you were trying to get hold of anyway. So don't waste your time, um, a- a- and it becomes incredibly, um, hurtful and painful, and you'll take it all horribly personally, I do, and then I go, woo, actually, there's somebody else there, I'll, let's, let's, let's pitch to them instead.
You're talking about all these relationships, I mean, it comes back to some of the older skills are the best, you know, like word of mouth, is the same as, um, you know, internet communication, emails, et cetera, and this is the same as, um, you know, you're kind of, you're networking, aren't you, you're meeting people face to face, and that's, that's key, that's what's coming across. I mean, what, what have you done recently where you probably say that a direct contact with somebody has been more beneficial than Bluetooth or?
I suppose.
Tweeting or whatever.
What have we just done recently?
I wanna, I wanna roll into a bit of an internet conversation.
We've got, um, recently, the last month, we did this, uh, like some stings, some music stings for, like, an online campaign for this, uh, kind of reality TV, online TV show called Rock Control, where they're, they're kind of like setting up a band, and they're gonna take, like, global world domination through kind of a social media meets kind of pop idol type thing. So we did the music for that, and that came about from, a couple of years ago, we got, um, we were one of the lucky few to win the Channel Four, Four Talent Award, it was like a scheme that they'd put for sort of like rising talent, and we got, we won the music, um, award for that. And, and we, you know, we met some of the other people from, um, some of the producers and directors who'd won different categories, and one of the, uh, producers was, uh, the guy who does the Rock Control thing, and we had no contact with him for, what, two, three years now? Um, and we got the work just, just through that, we, we, we met him like two and a half, three years ago.
Say we had no contact, we kind of still kept in touch, you know, socially, online, so he was like Facebook friend and all that kind of thing, but, you know, we, we didn't chat to him or anything like that, so.
We didn't send him any emails or anything like that, it's always good to have, you know, an awareness and a profile, that's always good to have out there. But yeah, so whatever we did back then, um, must have impressed him enough to know that two and a half years later, he can go, oh, I need some, I need some sort of like, some rock guitar and sort of percussion tracks knocking up, would you be able to do them for me? And we're like, yeah. So that's kind of a direct, direct contact and.
Networking's always been pretty good for us, though, hasn't it? We always like, try and go to as many events like this as possible, and, um, we always meet someone, don't we, and we always seem to end up getting a bit of work out of something, so it's always, it's always good.
I think it is in this industry, though, yeah, I, I come from a business development background in outsourcing, which is tremendously boring, the network, networking events I used to go to there were, um, probably one of the most dry things I've ever done, you kind of sit there talking to somebody and you think, are these people gonna be relevant for my business, you know, or I'll give them my card anyway, vice versa, you walk out with fifty cards, and you just kind of, I don't remember any of these people, I don't even know what they do, you know. Um, I, I, I found, you're right, in this industry, that networking's so important, and there's so many opportunities to do it. Um, you know, even sometimes just going to a gig, you know, there's always gonna be other people there, uh, and again, it's, that's where these relationships start, you know, and it can be that surprise phone call you get from that person, saying, oh, hey, remember me, we met at such and such, um, so anyway, you know, and it can go on from there, um, so, yeah, I think it's brilliant in this.
I think that, um, you know, we, we've all, um, been good and bad at networking in the past, I was pretty bad at it for a long time. Um, going to LA hones your networking skills, because they kind of, it's a professional networking town, um, and they do it very differently as well, they don't mind you launching into your pitch, in fact, they kind of think you're a weirdo if you don't launch into your, not a pitch, actually, that's not true, you do not start selling to people when you are at a party, that's, you know, but you can kind of introduce yourself and say what you do, that's what they're expecting you to do, at a, you know, at a works drink thing, they kind of want you to, to know who you are, why are you here? Um, and then they can work out whether they're gonna talk to you or not, and it's a pretty hard line, they'll walk away as well, so, um, you know, don't, don't pitch to people unless they're saying, actually, oh, really, you do that? I'm looking for something. Oh, really? Okay, duh, 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 fine, at that point, pitch. But for God's sake, it's a party, it's a social event, behave kind of as you would at a social event, like, be a nice, friendly person that people want to do business with, and then give them your music, you know, would you mind if I sent you some music? Here you go. And then you're not, because every, everything that you are saying to that person is making them think, do I want to or do I not want to do business with this person? And, you know, somebody that's, 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 that's coming up and thrusting CDs into your hand and going, it's really cinematic, is like, ugh, I'll put it on my really cinematic pile of CDs then, you know, it's kind of, um, it's, you, you know, I, I, I'm starting to sound a little bit like a bitch here, and I don't mean to, but it's kind of, it's, 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 it's part of getting you, you know, get yourself into the headset, the people who are too are gonna use his music, and the people that are gonna use his music are not bothered about you, they don't care whether your music is used or not, um, and so you have to make them care. They're, they're gonna make snap judgments, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um, and the other thing about relationships, it doesn't have to be just networking things, like, I've had people recommended to me by other people, and I've been recommended, and, um, some of the business I've done, I've never met people face to face, it's all been on the, or, or been on the phone and email for years, and I've had very lucrative relationships, because, um, uh, there has been somebody that's recommended me.
Stamp of approval.
A stamp of approval from somebody else that they know and, and, and respect, and I think that's also very important, and I think that's something that to an, to, 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 up to a point, you can exploit, you can say, I know you really like me, and you're not getting me as much work as you used to, so, uh, can you tell me, you know, who else? Who else? Let, let me take you for lunch, and tell me who else you think I should be talking to, and who would like, you know, to, 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 to hear the music, or, or to have a meeting, or whatever it is, um, and, and do it that way, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be, you know, the, 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 the choice is not face to face or social networking, you know, there is, there is a million ways to, 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 to conduct business relationships. Like I say, I've been, um, I met a guy for the first time last year, um, and I, he's been using my music for six years on, um, on ads, we did the Mastercard advert together, we did, he's, he phones me up every time he's doing an advert, and I've never met him until, in fact, earlier on this year, um, didn't, didn't matter, I, you know, we would chat, he can talk about things, it was a phone, you remember the phone.
It's very effective, very effective.
Very effective, yeah.
Okay, right, so for the last ten minutes, I reckon, um, see if anyone's got any questions, there's probably been tons raised there, there's been some really interesting, uh, stuff talked about, but yes, just wanna check the mic over there.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, it's interesting, I mean, what you're describing there, in fact, is, is any business, it seems to me, you know, it applies to anything, but what is interesting is, uh, is, is that this business seems to still be led by creativity, which, uh, I'm glad to hear. Um, but I, I was wondering, what, um, like, say you're, you're describing people as clients, um, what would drive a client to using something, um, like brand new? Why, why don't they just dip into sort of back catalogues? Is, is that about money? Uh, is it cheaper to sort of be creative?
I mean.
It's like, uh, you know, it's turning it on its head, is it, is it cheaper to be creative?
Well, it's, again, it depends on projects and per project, we were, we were kind of involved with a guy who, uh, did a BBC comedy series last year, and, uh, he'd had us lined up to, to write the music for this comedy series for quite a while, we were in touch quite a lot, and, um, we ended up sending him some, some very, sort of, just basic demos of, I mean, they were good quality demos, when I say basic, there wasn't a lot of time spent producing them, um, and he was, you know, was loving it. But in the end, it wasn't his decision, and it came down to budget, and the production team decided they were just gonna use some library music, because they could licence it so cheaply, rather than pay us whatever upfront fee for composing. So, yeah, I mean, the creativity in that, in that instance was outweighed by budget. But, you know, it works both ways, I think, if, if the budget's there, people do wanna pay for some bespoke music, definitely, yeah.
I think in, in all of these occasions, music is used as a function, there's a, uh, music is a, has a function, and the function can be multiple, it can be a creative function to, to, to enhance, you know, the, the feeling in a scene, or, or, um, to be part of a quirky character's personality, or whatever, that's a kind of creative function, but there's, you know, it has to create, there's all kinds of other things that it has to fit into, and even creatively, if only if it was ea- it was as easy as making one person happy, you know, it's, 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 there's always, even when, you know, you finally get Gary Calamar, who music supervises True Blood, to rave on about one of your artists, you're just thinking, I knew you'd like them, yeah, that's great, that's great. He, he doesn't have the final say on the music in, in his shows, he has, he's a very, very powerful music supervisor, who is employed on the basis that he has impeccable music taste and knows his stuff, but he, but, there's a lot of ego in music choices, and, 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 and people like to think that they're the, um, the, 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 they've had their stamp of things, and that goes for TV and film and, and, and advertising, um, absolutely, there's a, there is, um, it can be a very frustrating process, and you have to ticker, you have to fit in a lot of, uh, it could be any, any one thing. Sometimes people choose new bands because they think it's cheaper, I will get a brief through saying, we need your, we need, they call them baby bands, I don't know why, we need your baby bands because we haven't got very much money, and there's kind of some logic to that. It kind of goes along with the myth of bands being launched on the back of adverts, but we'll leave that to one side. Um, so, but there's, there is also, um, uh, a creative function, they need back catalogue, they need back catalogues, they want it to sound like something that's been produced in the nineteen sixties or nineteen seventies, or they're playing in some kind of nostalgia thing, or whatever, there's a creative function, but there's all kinds of other, other things at play.
Okay, good thanks. So is there any more questions? Move on.
I just asked, are you two guys musicians? Do you, is that how you?
Yeah.
Do you like, do you like grade eight on piano and guitar?
No, I wish, that would be quite useful. No, we can, um, we can sort of play the piano, we, we come from a classical guitar background, actually, so, you know, we, we studied that when we were sort of growing up, never got to grade eight, um, nowhere near, but, um, then when we came to uni, we, you know, we, we need, found out, we need to diversify, so we need to be able to sort of play a bit this, play a bit of that, so we can play capably now on a number of things in order for us to compose capably, so.
And in our studio, we've got a whole host of stuff, so if any, ever anyone goes on holiday, they know what to buy us, it's a musical instrument, we've got like oods and mandolins and all kinds of stuff, if there's anything with, with a stringed instrument, I, I'll pluck it and record it, and, you know what I mean, that's the kind of, kind of thing we do.
Okay, right, thanks very much, there's one more, uh, I think, real question, uh, what about music abroad, you know, about UK?
Oh, right, yeah, absolutely, um, we've, we've been collecting internationally now for about six years, um, so it's in place with, uh, well, there's about forty at the moment, uh, from an artist's point of view, that's about twenty different territories where we, we collect from. Um, there, a- again, because, because of the way we do it, where, uh, it's all not-for-profit, so our costs are like two percent, it's tiny, just to get that, that money into PPL. Um, and we, the money can come in at lots of different times throughout the year, so whereas the UK, we do an annual distribution, um, internationally, all of those different societies pay out at different times, um, this is all, of course, bearing in mind that you've had airplay in those different territories, um, but you can actually end up with, you know, if you get in the airplay, you can end up with almost monthly payments from PPL. But one of the key things about going through PPL to do that, actually, there are other options, you know, there, there are other sort of third-party companies out there that, that will collect on your behalf internationally, um, uh, one of the advantages of going through PPL is we, you know, we are the market leader, um, pretty much in the world as far as, uh, performance royalties are concerned, uh, so we've got quite a lot of clout with, with the other societies, we can, uh, you know, we represent your music, and we, we push as much as we can, but the money we get back for your music, um, is as accurate as possible. Um, and the other key thing, as I mentioned, is, is cost, you know, these, these other companies that are going to collect on your behalf, they're probably going to charge you 15, 20%, sometimes more. And they may even use another party in between them and the, uh, the, the licensing company in a different territory, uh, who will also take their cut. Um, so the artists, who is my main concern, you know, that's what I work with, that's who I work with every day. Um, they're the guys that would lose out in that instance. Um, so, yeah, we're, I mean, we're distributing, last year we distributed about 22 and a half million pounds, um, from international revenue. Uh, bearing in mind, we'd started at zero five years ago. So, um, it's a massive growth and that is our biggest area of growth actually at PPL. So, yeah, we do that.
Okay, right, I think we'll draw, draw a line in the sand just there. So, um, just to tell you what's happening next. Uh, in here, there's the, it's going to be an industry session, okay? So we've got an opportunity to talk to some of the mentors. Um, UK Trades and Industry, Musicians Union, Vision Media and also Business Link and anybody else that's knocking around, I guess. Uh, and it's going to be done on a kind of a musical chairs speed dating, uh, system. So I'm not sure what tracks can be played there. You're in charge of that one. Um, and after that, um, there's the main, uh, event this evening, um, which has been sandwiched with Bruce, um, from Modern English's Social Networking Session, okay? Which is, I think, in one of the rooms down there on the left. Is it in the meeting room? Is that correct? Yeah, okay. Um, and this evening's, uh, panel has got numerous guests on it. Um, it's probably going to be very interesting as well as this. But, um, I'd like to thank a big, well, I'm going to say a big thank you to everyone that turned up today. So thanks, Rachel, thanks, Dan.
Have you got the guest list?
I don't have the guest list.
Uh, okay, so, um, welcome to the final session, uh, here at Soundbites. Uh, if you've been here all day, I hope you're having a, a fantastic day. Uh, if you've just arrived, welcome. Um, this is the panel discussion, this is the panel. Uh, I'm Dave Haslam, I'm chairing the discussion. Uh, I've used to back in the day DJ at the Hacienda and I still DJ, uh, which I find quite hard to believe, but anyway, people turn out and dance, so all is good. Uh, and, uh, I've been a journalist, written for the NME and The Guardian and some of the more posh papers and written some books. Uh, in fact, that kind of multitasking type career in the music industry is probably something that we'll be talking about, uh, with the panel. A couple of housekeeping points, if you could make sure your mobile phones are switched off, which is the polite thing to do. Uh, if a fire should break out, don't throw yourselves through the window. Make your way calmly through the, uh, green fire exit door. You can tell I've been told to say some of these things, they don't come naturally to me. Um, obviously today's event has been organised and funded by Lancashire County Council's Creative Lancashire Team. Uh, they've had support from Arts Council England, Business Link North West and Vision and Media. Uh, there will be some feedback forms, there are some feedback forms on the desk at the back. And it is very useful on these occasions if you, uh, grab a feedback form and fill it in so that we get feedback and the organisers get feedback and then events like this can happen again, uh, but even better. Uh, we've got 10 and a half hours, okay, for this panel discussion. Uh, and these people can talk, uh, but I've made a decision as chair that we will have a break after about an hour, uh, to allow anyone who wishes to have a cigarette or empty their bladder or whatever they want to do. Uh, we're going to call it a comfort break and that will be happening in about 45 minutes to an hour's time. Um, what we do in the first half is talk to the panel about their individual stories. Uh, their experiences, their mistakes, any advice they might have to people who wish to make some kind of a living in the music industry or any of the ancillary industries connected with music. Um, so it'll be about individuals and hopefully, uh, we'll have time for some, uh, Q and A in the first half if you want to speak to or talk to or get feedback or advice from any of the panelists. In the second half, I want to widen the discussion and we'll be talking about how do we develop good local scenes in cities like Preston, Lancaster, et cetera. Uh, the panel, together hopefully with the audience, I'd like us in the second half to be talking about, even maybe making a list in our heads about the key ingredients that make, uh, a scene or make a city happen. Uh, how, how would you get to a point where people want to come and stay in a city, to work in a city, make a living in music or related industries in the city? Um, and I know that there are people, obviously local people from Preston, but also people involved in decision making from Preston, Lancaster, et cetera. And I know you all have, um, some views on that. Okay, so that's kind of the structure of the next two and a half hours, okay? So all those in favour, say aye. And all those against, leave through the fire exit. Okay, so, uh, what I'm going to do now is just, uh, allow the panelists to very briefly introduce themselves and then I'll start firing some questions at them. Um, this is a, uh, this microphone here is a roving mic. Uh, when we do a Q and A, uh, please wait until you receive this microphone. Otherwise you won't be recorded by Radio Lancashire for posterity. Um, there will be Q and A, as I say, in about half an hour. So even if you are on the edge of your seat and you do want to, um, make any kind of intervention, it would be helpful if you could maybe wait until the formal Q and A, if that's okay with you all. Okay, so can I start with David on the far end? If you could all just introduce yourselves very briefly so the audience know who you are and where you're at.
Hello, um, I'm Dave Pitchelingi, um, I'm director of Sound City and we do festivals in, in Liverpool, in America and Dubai. And, and I'll talk about all the other stuff I've done later on.
Hello, Karen Boardman, uh, crisis management. We look after bands, singer songwriters. We also have a mu- film, a music film production unit, does pop promos, documentaries, et cetera. And just started a little synchronisation company called Sound Songs.
Hi, yeah, I'm Jane Compton and I run a record label called Switch Flicker Records.
I'm called Liam Walsh, I run a company called Ask Me PR. We are a, a record plugging company. That's, but it's much bigger than that and I'll explain that later.
Uh, my name's Andrew Carthy or Mr Scruff. Uh, I'm a DJ, producer, um, I suppose illustrator and I've got a tea company.
My name's Andy Votel, I run a, three or four very independent record labels. Uh, I produce my own music and remix bands and I've also designed about 200 record sleeves and I DJ at the weekend.
Okay, that's brilliant. I've got, um, a question that I'm going to ask all panel members in a moment. I'm going to ask them all, what was a one moment in the last however many years that you've been making, uh, a career for yourselves? A moment where you actually got it right? Where there was a moment where you felt a sea change happen and you thought, okay, I can do this, I can make a living out of my passion for music? And I'm also going to ask you all the opposite, which is your biggest mistake? Because I think one of the things that we all should acknowledge from the start this evening is the importance of learning from mistakes, you know? Uh, and maybe it's your own mistake, but also maybe learning from other people's mistakes. And while the panel think about that, I'm just going to give my examples. Um, the moment I think when it worked for me was, uh, when I was, started out DJing, uh, which I thought was just about turning up with a box of records. But the thing which, uh, I did right, in a, in a kind of unspont, in a kind of spontaneous, unselfconscious way, was I started to learn about the mechanics of clubs. Instead of just turning up with a box of records, I was trying to work out, how is, how does, how does a club work? What are the mechanics that bring people in? What marketing ideas can be brought in? And that meant that I'd been able to have a career for 25 years as a DJ by also putting on my own parties and learning about marketing and learning about press releases and flyers and trying to think of things from an audience's point of view. What would an audience want? Um, and, uh, there are lots of DJs out there in the world, uh, more and more every day. Um, and, and I think it was important and lucky that I came to a realisation that I needed to bring, if you like, something else to the table rather than just my box of records. Um, I think my biggest mistake was, um, not meeting an accountant, um, 25 years ago. Um, I've not had real bad financial problems, but, um, I think what you have is, if you're a creative type person, you tend to think of accountancy as something you really don't want to think about, you know? All the kids at school who wanted to be accountants were not the kids that you kind of hung out with. You hung out with the cool kids. Well, actually, that was wrong. Um, I wish that I kind of met someone, at least somebody who could have done, done the books for me. Do you know what I mean? Because over the years, the inland revenue have probably fined me about £5,000 for not filling in the right form at the right time. Uh, not because I'm a dodgy geezer, because I've also actually, inland revenue on one occasion inquired into me and, uh, desperate to find out that, you know, I'd, I'd been taking loads of backhanders and bungs and et cetera and I hadn't been, but I have been fined. I just, the paperwork gets you down. Um, and maybe that's a slightly prosaic thing to say. Maybe you want to be inspired by, uh, by what I'm saying and, and to get into the music industry. But actually, that's quite a mundane thing and, and I think that was my biggest mistake. Um, was that I didn't befriend an accountant. Uh, I'm going to ask Karen, because she's nodding very wisely. Uh, Karen, what is your, what's your kind of best and worst experience?
I was just going to follow on from what you said, it's because you didn't have a good manager.
Yeah, possibly.
There you go, we would have cited that for you, Dave. Um, we're, we're the same thing really, I mean, I think it's about collating information as you go along and then the light bulb suddenly switches on and I spent, well, Dave can clarify this, many a tedious night in the Hacienda working there with five people in the place. But what was happening was that bands were coming through and crew members were coming through and I could talk to them, talk to the tour managers and the managers and say, what do you do? That get, the working behind the bar gave me the ticket in to be able to collate the information. And much later on, when I, I, I got a job at London Records for the same reason, finding out how the mechanisms of a record label worked. I was just a secretary in the sales division when I started. But I was clocking things and finding out how things work and what you needed in terms of the business around the artist to make it work. And suddenly a band came in, they wanted management, I loved the music. And I was, I loved the music that much, so when I went to the people who just saw me as a secretary, not only did I go when I was challenging the music, but I also had a grasp of how the business worked because of all this experience. So I was able to present the band and a marketing plan and a plot forward in terms of live and stupid things like how we could rack it out in the stores and all this. And they suddenly took me seriously and that band got signed within that Universal Music Group. So that's when I knew, hang on a minute, I can do this. Um, and it did change the course of my life. And the worst mistake I've ever made was turning down The Verve for management.
So The Verve came to you and said, please manage us? And you, why did you turn them down?
Because they were just a really, you know, they were an indie kid type band then, it was back in the day and, you know, I don't, it was just awful. It was one of the, everybody's got those stories, I think. And, uh, but they were an indie band in the early days. I don't know if anyone's got early Verve stuff and there was a lot of that stuff around at the moment. You never kind of know who's going to raise the head above the parapet. I mean, I, I wouldn't bet Jamiroquai would have done it out of all those acid jazz block. There were much better bands out.
So as a manager, what percentage of The Verve's income could you have earned if you'd signed on the dotted line with them?
I s- well, it, it varies, but generally, a, um, a management commission is 20% across all revenue. So PRS, live income, et cetera, record deals, publishing deals. That's what, it's different in America, it's about 15, I think, but 20%.
Okay.
But 80% of something is better than 100% of all.
Um, Liam?
Um, I think my moment was, uh, was working with Oasis. Um, Noel and I had worked with Inspiral Carpets beforehand, we'd gone on tour with them. And Noel lost his job, uh, with them. I'd kind of lost my job as well because I was doing all their t-shirts for them. And I then watched Noel write the first album, because we both lived in the same building. And from writing that album, doing the demos, getting together with his brother, uh, I was then working in the boardwalk where everybody else rehearsed downstairs. And I just saw them grow and grow and grow. Um, when I'd finished doing my, my t-shirt company, um, my friend had just set up a company called Red Alert and she said, come and work with us. And we all knew each other, so she knew Liam as well and we're all mates, we all went to the Hacienda together. And then watched Noel basically grow and grow and grow and then obviously sign, uh, to Creation Records. And we worked their first record. I then worked at Red Alert, we did the first record, sent it out to all the right people. And I watched that happen and then suddenly, and, and then watched him become a millionaire. And from that, our, our company got a real name for itself in the North West. Because normally it's a London company who do the, the radio and TV and the press for people. So we did really well from that. Um, and that's why I thought, I'm going to carry on doing this. And I've carried on, done pretty well, to be honest with you. Everything's changed now, the music industry's changed, so, uh, I, I wouldn't say, uh, the money is there anymore. The worst thing I ever did was, I used to, I was watching all these new bands, all these new emerging bands and I'd be helping them or our company would be helping them. When I took over the company on my own, after 10 years, uh, the two partners left. Um, I, I watched some of these new emerging North West bands, you know, go on to great things. I thought, right, okay, I'm going to have a piece of that. So I set up my own record label, so I did, called it Two Nice Recordings, founded a band, um, put out the first record, um, invested my deposit for a house. I thought, okay, you've got to speculate to accumulate, do I put my money into the band? You know, they could be, go on to be enormous, there's a massive buzz about this band, order to put it into the house. And I put it into the band. Um, spent money on, uh, on making the first album, album, doing the demo in the first album. They did really well with the first single, got, got all the right radio shows, doing, you know, all the right sessions, did the Medivale session, everybody's going, oh, this is going to go somewhere. And then they jumped ship and they, uh, they were poached by, uh, a record label that was a part of Sony. And then I was advised by my lawyer to, uh, to go to a litigator. Now, of course, that was, you know, I didn't know what I was doing, to be honest with you. And I just took the advice of people I thought knew better than I did and they were the lawyers. Got introduced to a liquid, uh, a, a litigator, got introduced to a barrister. Before I knew it, you know, tens of thousands of pounds had been spent. Um, six years later, ended up in court, in the High Courts in London, which was three years ago. And thought it was going to be, you know, the David and Goliath story, I was going to win, the honest, you know, person. But there's loads of twists in the story and the band actually won, the record label actually won. Um, and left me in £170,000 worth of debt. So I really learnt my lesson from it, you know?
Like you would.
So, uh, the band ended up being dropped afterwards. Um, and the record label lost their deal with Sony as well. Nobody won, and I was saying this to somebody earlier, absolutely nobody won in that situation apart from the lawyers. The barrister was always being paid, you know, the litigators were paid. And everybody else just lost out, totally, totally lost out. But I was still doing it, you know, I'm still in the music industry, even though people say I can't believe it, you know? I would have ran away, I would have just, you know, hidden away, but I've just kept on going, to be honest with you.
Jane, can you share your experiences with us?
Yeah, I haven't got anything quite like that, but, um, I guess I started off like you, Dave, did. I worked in a record shop when I was at school, uh, started DJing. And I started putting on my own little club nights, did sort of DJ club nights, did live gig club nights. And then from there, I started a record label. With the record label, I just put out Little Limited Seven Inches, which is what everyone used to do. From friends really, people that I met just in the local sort of Manchester club scene. Um, kind of did that for a few years. Uh, moved into an old sort of derelict mill in Manchester. Accidentally started a club in the basement because it was just a big empty club. Um, there was a band next door to the club who were called De Rescimo, they turned into the Ting Tings. I put out their first record, um, you know, that took off. Uh, did another artist as well called Magic Arm, he's just been on tour with Grizzly Bear. Um, so, yeah, that's, just grew things really, really slowly, really, just from DJing, just from putting on little club nights and not very big, only like 100, 200 people. And from that very small numbers, things can kind of snowball and get the right, some, get the press, things get hyped and they can, you know, become very big very quickly. So I guess.
Not always.
Not always.
But you have, you have quite a difficult experience with the Ting Tings though, didn't you? Because you just said that you, you know, you put out their first record and.
Yeah.
But then, then it all went a bit tits up, didn't it? Was that, do you look back on that? Obviously, they jumped ship as well and went to a bigger, a bigger label, which is the kind of thing which often happens.
Yeah.
Do you look back on that as with regret? Do you wish you'd never got involved with the Ting Tings or how do you deal with a situation like that when you've been so kind of involved emotionally and financially in getting a band up and running and then they run right off and, and you're not a part of it anymore?
Well, no, I didn't have any regrets. It was, it was a great experience and it was good to watch it all happen and see how it all worked. I think the fact that the band didn't have a lot of loyalty will, will kind of show in the long term of, of their own career. Because I think the decisions you make are, you know, is what you live your life by is how artistically you've kind of known and, no, it was a great experience because for me, that's what I want to do more and more of, develop bands in a very small term and make them into big pop groups. And I, prior to that, it didn't interest me in the slightest. I wasn't interested in a pop aesthetic, I wasn't interested in a verse chorus, verse chorus kind of song. But from working with them, I thought, wow, you know, it's, it's a really great experience and I enjoyed a lot. I, I did enjoy a lot of it, yeah. But I also enjoyed it complementing the other sort of artists that I worked with and the stuff I do myself, which is much more lefty, I'm much more out there. But in the same sense, I have a love of pop music and the mainstream and it was really good to put something interesting in, into the, you know, into the mainstream. And that's definitely something I want to do more.
Dave, do you have a high point and a low point to tell us about?
I've got tons of low points. I can go on all night about low points. I think what you said at the beginning really about, I'm a gen, definitely a journalist, not a specialist really, because I think I've worked in most areas of music, from publishing to records to promoting to everything really, and I've got a story about every one of them. I think key things that come out really from reflecting back, I guess hindsight's a great thing, is, I, I think back to, one of the first things I did was working in, that's Radio Merseyside, BBC Radio Merseyside. And that was great because it got to, I got to meet lots and lots of people in bands, managers, promoters, tour managers and so on. And it demystified it a bit, a little bit for me, so it kind of made me think, oh, I can do this actually, you know, I can actually do this. It's, it's not, it's not as hard or as magical or mystical as it is, they're just like me. They've just kind of had their breaks or whatever, or whatever it might be. And I think one of those high point, or the points where you felt, or where you realised you could do it for a living, because I was an artist first and foremost, but then ended up through default. And again, just because, going back to what Karen was saying, the band, I worked with a band called The Farm in Liverpool and they couldn't get a manager and we didn't have a manager, but they saw me as, as a manager at that time. And so we ended up setting up a label called Produce Records. And this was at a time when everything was going off in Manchester, it was, because we had to do swap gigs with Happy Mondays, we'd do a gig in Manchester with them, they'd come over and, and could, they couldn't get a, the deal for, you know, anywhere, no one had signed them. And no one had signed The Farm because that scally rock thing was completely out of favour. And then of course, Happy Mondays went to Factory. And, and The Farm were a little bit pissed off in the sense that, that they couldn't get a record deal still, like, you know, because the majors were still not looking at those types of acts at that time. And I think one of the things that taught me was, A, it's do it yourself. It's a great thing to do is do it yourself, you know, because they're wrong. Majors are always wrong. You know, they've not got people in there that understand anything really, you know. They're good at turning something into money once it's reached a ceiling, but getting it to that ceiling, they're very, very, you know, they're useless at getting it to that ceiling. For certain types of bands, but for certain types of artists, they're good at it, you know. But for, for a lot of the bands and the things that we're talking about round here, they're useless at it. And so that do it yourself thing, I think is, was, was a really good lesson. And I think another great thing, because at that time with Produce, we went from, when we started the label to, with, with The Farm to having number one album and a couple of top ten singles, and I can't even remember how many countries. And, and everyone was thinking, oh, you're amazing, what a great record label. But A, it was because it was in favour, you know, there's synchronicities, just looks like luck, you know, it was, it was important because that was, it was, you know, it was all happening at that time. So we were at the front of the bus instead of being on the bus that had just left the bus stop. So that was important. And, and I think, the other thing that was really, really important was a guy called Barney Morse had funded the label. We'd known Barney for about ten months and he used to turn up in his, his old skin jacket, you know, smoking weed all the time, saying, can I help, can my dad put a bit of money into this label and everything. Barney, lift that amp onto the stage, will you, and all this kind of stuff. And it was only after ten months, the story was quite long, but we found out his, his, his dad was, was the Morse family and they were probably the third wealthiest family in the country at that time. And we had a meeting and we ended up starting Produce with about just under a hundred thousand pounds, like, but we didn't sell anyone because we thought that wouldn't be cool, you know, it's not like indie then, does it? So we, we did have a lot of money really and we spent a lot quite badly really. So that, that was, that was important and that was a time, from radio thing to doing that, where you think, yes, I can do this and stuff. In terms of mistakes, I guess as an artist, signing to a major record label was a mistake. You know, I, I, you know, for look back now, we weren't that great, I don't think it would have lasted much longer if we'd, if we'd have been on another label.
So what, what band were you in then?
It was a band called Thirty Five Summers. We were more famous for the t-shirts, we had a very famous Bill Shankin t-shirt that, that got in the face, it got the t-shirts.
Not as famous as the Inspirals though.
Didn't sell as many as the Inspirals, it beat it though in, in the thing, anyway, I'm not going to talk about the Inspirals. Famous mank band, weren't they, yeah?
But it's, it's funny that we've already had people saying that signing to a major, I mean, Liam mentioned, hit the band he was talking about, you know, who, who jumped on to a major or part of Sony, but then got dropped and so no one won. You know, and you're saying, you're talking about that, so.
I, I think, you know.
You know, sometimes, obviously a lot of people sat in this room must be thinking, if they're in a band or they're involved in a band or they're managing a band, they must be thinking of signing to a major is, is hitting the jackpot.
If there's ever a time you don't sign to a major, it's now, because they've got no cash, all, they used to only be good for cash, they haven't even got that now. You know, so, you know, they're like funeral parlors. If you go to these labels now in London, you know, where there used to be seven floors of people, they've now got them all onto two floors and they've locked all the doors on the other floor, so you don't realise that they're, that they're, they're like funeral parlors. You know, there's nobody working for them. They're pretending that what they do, you know, in Liverpool and Manchester and, you know, going back five years ago, there was a band a month being assigned to a major record label. You're lucky if it's a band every six, eight months now. And that's not because there's not great bands in Liverpool or great bands in Manchester, it's because the record labels have got no money. No, they're knackered.
So what does the band do now then?
Do it yourself. Do it yourself.
Okay.
Like Switch Flicker, like Andy did, you know. And, you know, but you've got to find great artists, you know, there's loads, there'll be always loads of bands that'll do it themselves, say, oh, well, it didn't work for us. It's usually because the band's shit. You know.
You can't walk between lampposts in Manchester without bumping into someone who goes, oh, when I had my deal. No, they're everywhere. They just can't stop.
Mr Scruff, could you share with us one of your many successful moments, but also, you know, if, anything that you've can look back on and think, you know, maybe slightly regretfully or something that you kind of wish in hindsight, that maybe something that you hadn't done?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I started DJing very young when I was eleven, but I lived out in Stockport, which is probably, you know, kind of quite similar to Preston in terms of, you know, if, if you're young, there's not a lot going on really. Well, I wasn't back in the eighties anyway. So I spent about probably twelve years DJing, making mixtapes at home, giving to our mates. And I wasn't even bothered about getting gigs because there were no gigs in Stockport. I didn't even associate that what I'd been doing for ten years could even get me out of the house and I could, you know, even go to a mate's party and DJ. It was like, I make mixtapes, there you go. I used to sell a few in record shops or whatever and that was the limit of it. So I was quite happy, you know, I was doing a degree, working part-time in QuickSave mixing. It was just a hobby, but there was no aspirations beyond that. And when I, I gave a tape to a mate of mine who's still very active in Manchester now, a guy called Michael Barnes Winters, who's a very scatty Bristolian, very stylish and he's constantly going on about new people, he's met young creative people and putting them in touch with each other. He's very random, but that's part of his charm. He's a great catalyst for good things. I think probably half the people in Manchester at the moment who are doing stuff have been given a leg up in some way or another by Barney. He's, you know, they're about, just even if it's from introducing you to someone or, you know, putting you on at one of his gigs, he got me my first DJ gig, he got me my record deal. So very quickly, I went from, you know, a, a guy in Stockport who was in his bedroom to playing three or four bar gigs a week and having records out. I mean, luckily, when I got to that point, I was obviously, well, I signed to Rob's Records and obviously those guys thought my music was good enough and my DJing was good enough to kind of, actually, once I started DJing in bars, people took notice of me and I started DJing at club nights and stuff like that. But it was always other people's stuff. I never really had, I, I was so happy and content buying records and doing mixes and just, you know, being a bit of a nerd in Stockport that I didn't really think, oh, I'm going to put on my own club nights. I didn't know anyone who put on a club night. It's like, all right, Barney got me a gig in a bar, I was DJing at Man U Mision, I played at a night called Head Funk. And a lot of the kind of hip hop funk soul jazz nights that Andy Votel was playing as well, you know, there's, there's a big sort of group of us, you know, young enthusiastic people who are into all kinds of mainly black music in, in Manchester. And that, that time in the sort of early mid nineties was very fruitful. So we're just doing loads of gigs and, you know, the more records you put out, the more recognition you get out of town, then that's almost like your business card, it kind of, you release a few thousand records, they make their way around the country, a few months later, they kind of, that builds up into a bit more of a presence. You get booked out of town, Birmingham or London or whatever. So you, you, you end up getting more gigs around the country. But it was always DJing at other people's club nights. I used to DJ at the Electric Chair, I used to DJ at a reggae night called Dubby's, I used to do a world music night in Manchester called One Tree Island, I used to play it. You know, loads of different nights, reggae nights, house nights, Latin nights, hip hop nights, loads of different bar gigs. And I never really thought, because this was the days before all the networking and stuff like that, I never used to do the flyers or anything, I just used to turn up, there were people in the clubs, I'd play records, get paid a bit, get the bus home. And it was only when a lady called Rocky, who was involved in a new club in Manchester, which opened in ninety nine called Planet K, she offered me a residency and I was like, I've never even thought of that before. I was so sort of politically happy, right, I can buy records, great, I can eat with it. So that was, that was fine. By that time, about ninety six, I was, I was making money for, I left QuickSave, I was only earning sixty quid a week, so actually what I needed to, to earn or to kind of be doing it for a living was pretty small, you know, I used to eat out of Thrills Brown, buy thirty quid worth of records a week and my rem was really cheap. So it was very, you know, three or four bar gigs and a bit of income, which was then coming in from having released music for a few years. That was all building up nicely, so it's like, right, I can buy records, I can live, that's fine, this is what I now do for a living. But it very, very gradually turned into that. Pretty much, I wasn't really pushing myself at all, it was just stuff getting offered to me and I was like, okay, that sounds all right. Which is very much the spirit of the stuff that was going on in the nineties, everyone was really helpful, people playing at each other's club nights, it was very, people were learning and you, and you do loads of rubbish gigs, which you think as a band or a DJ, you have to do all the terrible gigs where, you know, you turn up to a bar and they've not told you that the football's on and you have to wait for two hours and then you're playing to thirty blokes at the end of the night and that kind of thing. But in, in ninety nine, this is just after I'd been signed to Ninja Tune, which was quite a big deal. Well, then I'd known the Ninja guys for years because we're all kind of peers anyway, so it was like, whoa, Ninja Tune, but then I knew them all and it was like, oh, I'm on my mate's label. So the first night of my residency, which, you know, I finally accepted the offer, thought, right, I'll put my own night on, a bit scary, was the launch night for my Keep It Unreal album. And that was the first time it actually twigged that people were paying to come to a club to see me play records. Until then, I was playing records at someone else's club night. And I'd had residencies, you know, other people's nights for maybe four or five years and it was like, I had fun, but it didn't, the penny didn't drop until then. I was like, wow, these three, four hundred people have come in, they've paid a fiver on a Sunday night to hear me play records. And I think from that point, more, much more so than making a living from the music, because that happened so gradually. And I've always been very cautious sort of financially and with kind of, you know, for a couple of years, I was doing one day a week at QuickSave just in case the music didn't work out, so I could go back full time if I needed to. But I think from that point, it was like, wow, people want to come and see me. And that was, I think that was, in, in terms of coming to a realisation where, right, this is what I do now, I think that, that was, that, that first night, and I'm still, you know, it's eleven years since I started that residency, I'm still doing it now. And, you know, I've got my night in Manchester on Saturday, so kind of, you know, once I find something I'm happy with, I, you know, stick with it for a while and poot it along. Which is, the second bit of your question, the kind of, what do you most regret? I'm probably the least rock and roll DJ you could ever find, so I've not really, you know, kind of thrown myself out of a window or sworn at someone or had a fight with a DJ or whatever. I think my only really regret, regrets have been occasionally accepting, sort of every three or four years, someone offers me, you know, a lot of money for doing what looks like quite a rubbish gig. And I'll take that gig, I'll go and it reminds me why I only do those gigs one, you know, sort of every three or four years. So I think it's very important, I think if you want to be, I don't, I don't like to say music industry, because the music bit's really good, the industry bit's a bit, I don't know, they're quite often at odds with each other. But I think if you're going to make a living from doing something you like, in order to keep enjoying it, which will keep the passion and everything like that and, and basically keep your spirits high enough so you're inspired enough for people to want to come and pay you, to see what you do or buy your records. If you start doing stuff just for money and things you don't enjoy, if you're relying on, on a passion to earn money, then that's quite dangerous ground. And every so often, I'll go, you know, someone goes, do you want to play at this big, you know, sort of rave festival or whatever and I'll turn there, up there and everyone's wearing those massive pink boots and I just feel like everyone's grandad. And, you know, you don't really connect with the crowd, it's like, that's why I don't do these gigs and then I just, you know, I'm due another one this year actually. But, but I say, I think just, it's just doing, I mean, I'm lucky never to have done like any music for, you know, sort of on spec or anything like that. I don't really work on, you know, commission or anything like that, it's quite, I'm very lucky because I've been so particular about what I do that I think it's, I've never really got myself into a situation where I've stuck.
Yeah, being, but kind of particular and a bit maverick is kind of part of what you are now in a way as well, isn't it? You can be able to build that into the Scruff brand, if you like.
Yeah, I mean, even that, you know, people say it's a brand, but it's just like, that's how I draw and all these daft ideas kind of get created. But I think that the long and short of it is, is if, if you do stuff, if you start, I think pimping out your passion, I think, for instance, if you're good at, if you're a great musician and you start writing music for computer games and that's something you're good at and Andy does a lot of graphic design, that's, I think if you can cut yourself in half and go, right, that's the, you know, I'm not trained, I'm not a trained, well, I'm kind of a trained artist, but I draw like a drunk five-year-old. I'm not a trained musician, so someone, you know, it takes me ages to write a piece of music, so someone's not going to come up to me and go, I want you to write a theme tune for, you know, the next, you know, countdown or whatever or this film. Because I'm like, well, I work with samples and, you know, I'm a bit scatty and I kind of like doing stuff on my own time and playing by my own rules, I think. But in order to be as, you know, have as much fun as I do DJing and releasing music and do exactly what I want creatively, there's a hell of, a lot of really boring, geeky, nerdy stuff. You know, every gig I do, I soundcheck four or five hours, just probably spend five, ten hours emailing people and being on the phone, making sure everything's technically perfect when you arrive. And the same goes for negotiating recording contracts and all that stuff behind. So I think the, the framework and all the, not particularly interesting stuff, but the necessary nuts and bolts, it's really good to make sure they're all in place, so then you can forget about it and have fun.
No, that perfectionism is important, I think, caring about it.
Yeah, definitely.
So, but what made you start a tea empire? Because obviously the panel of a lot of skills between us, you know, there's like DJing, we've got great ears for music, but there's only one of us who has a tea empire.
Yeah, I mean, that was, well, when I did the Keep It Unreal night, I think the moment I realised that, right, I've got my own night, can do what I want, I thought, what do I like? I like tea and I like music. So, but when we moved to a venue, we moved from Planet K, that lasted about six months because the venue wasn't that well run. But I moved to another venue in Manchester, sort of quite a dingy basement venue, called The Music Box. And the main room is just, you know, it's just a very low ceiling, all sorts of stuff dripping on you, you know, proper sweatbox, but really, you know, legendary Manchester venue. But in the foyer, when you come in, a lot of club nights have that, have another DJ in there. But it's quite, I don't like putting DJs in a room that's like a corridor or has toilets in it. A dance floor should be a dance floor, it shouldn't be on the way somewhere, it should be, you know, that's where you go. You don't cross the dance floor to go to the bar, because then you bump into people when they're trying to have a boogie and stuff. So we, I just thought, well, we'll have a little tea stall in there. I thought, I like, you know, I used to go to a lot of Northern Soul nights, and when I used to play at Man U Mision and a lot of All Nighters in the Village in the early nineties. When I could get a brew at six in the morning, it was brilliant. And, you know, you take tea for granted, but when, when you're in a situation where you can have a brew and you're not really supposed to, there's something quite special about it. So I thought, well, I'm gonna, if, every time I go to a Northern Soul night at three in the morning, I find I've got a brew and it's amazing, it's the best thing about the night, I think, well, if I can do a little tea stall, it's about to be like twenty percent of the people in this club are gonna do the same thing as me and go, wow, tea, brilliant. And that, so did that about, for about ten, well, started that ten years ago, still doing it now at every gig now, every gig all around the UK, we take a tea stall. But about four years ago, after doing a tea stall at festivals like Womad, The Big Chill, Glastonbury a bit, we thought, we're selling ten thousand cups of tea at this festival, we're buying these tea bags, sometimes they're a bit rubbish, why don't we do our own tea, you know, solve that problem? And I'd already done loads of Mad Merchant and stuff like that, so it's like, yeah, why not? And it was just something, because I'd, by then I'd, people, even before I had the tea company, people go, Mr. Scruff, Mr. Scruff Gigs, tea. It was a perfectly natural thing to do. And by default, it's introduced me to a whole new audience as well. And I think as, you know, kind of music sales, physical music sales have gone down, I always say to people, you cannot download a teabag, you can nip people's music, but, no, you can't just print out a teabag at home, you can't, you know, so, someone's gonna email you the latest English breakfast and you print it out and put it in your virtual mug. It's not gonna happen.
Brilliant, I love that. Mr. Votel?
Yes.
Yeah, could you share with us, obviously you're a fantastic graphic designer, we've discussed, and DJ, and record label person, could you tell us a bit about, you know, the good times and the bad?
I think you originally said, what mistakes have you, you gave an example of a mistake you'd made. And I thought, you see, when I first saw Andy tonight, he said, what have you been up to? And Dave said, what have you been up to? And that's just something that people say. But, and I said today, I've not been doing anything. Because all I can be saying is I've been doing the same thing that I was last time I saw you, and the time before, and when I was eleven, or eight, or whatever. I've never done anything different from this. And I think mistakes, it just depends how you gauge success. So I can say, I've never made a mistake, Dave. Never done anything wrong. Ever. I've just done it exactly how I wanted to, non-stop. And, I mean, I think, I can tell you when it's been depressing for me. And like, it's the same as Andy really, and it's just sort of, when you say you go to gigs and you're not sure about doing them and you're just sort of doing them for the money. And it's when you just start doing things that you don't feel a hundred percent right with, or you start doing things for other people. Or, I mean, see, I'm talking about five or six different vocations, but I don't even think of them as careers, because they're just what come to naturally. And they always have been. I've never worried about a company car getting revoked. And I don't really, although I have a family and I've managed to work for twenty years, fifteen, twenty years doing what I'm doing, I've never as yet had to worry about paying the bills. But that's kind of been, because every time I'm doing one job and I worry about it, I just move to one of my other jobs and back and forth. So I'm kind of, kind of lucky in that, in that respect. But it's, it's when you, when, within the record label, for example, it's like demos will come in all the time, and they still do come in, like, and you hear something. And there'll be a time, like every few years, similar to Andy, you hear something, you go, wow, that sounds like something that's just been on the radio, that's been really successful. And you think, maybe we could do something with that. But it just sounds like something that's been in the radio, sounds like something which has just been successful. And I think you put the possibility of sort of making them mistakes where you're doing something where you, maybe because it's gonna take off, it always screws up for me. So it's only when I'm doing things which I truly believe in. And I've never seen this as a career. And the reason why I do five or six different things is because I need to. You know, for years and years you hear people like young bands, there's like three common lines that that sort of young bands and young people say. And one of them is like, I just want to do this full time, I just want, I just want to be a musician full time. Now, that's a great thing, but I know a lot of people, and between everybody sat here, we know hundreds of very successful people. But we don't know that many people who can do it full time, because everyone has to balance a hell of a lot of different things to make this happen. And especially in this day and age, if you wanna keep on doing something creative or something true, you know, you're gonna have to balance a few different things. It's kind of like, it's a myth. I mean, you know, some of those famous people I know who've done something really brilliant, it's because of the kind of person that they are. It might not even be how talented they are. They're just one of them rare people that become like that and can do that full time. But most of them, we have to balance a hundred different things and change our jobs all the time because, because that's how it goes. So, I mean, yeah, it's only when I've tried to aspire to something, I mean, with Twisted Nervous and Finders Keepers, it's never happened with Finders Keepers, but with Twisted Nervous especially, we had a lot of success with Badly Drawn Boy. And it was when somebody came along and said, you could, you could start acting like a major label, or you could start trying, you could be like a major label. Well, another thing that I really hate is when people say, you can take it to the next level, which is just the biggest load of horse shit. I don't even know what that means anymore. It's just like, you know, it's alright at this level, do you know what I mean? We're happy. And, and I'm still doing it fifteen years later, I'm still doing exactly what I'm doing, if not longer. It's never changed. And I think that's, to me, that is success. So I've never done anything wrong, do you know what I mean?
No, I knew you'd never done anything wrong, which is why I came to you last. There's, I mean, obviously there's quite a lot of, I think, quite a lot of useful themes already, you know, about doing it yourself, about, you know, believing in your own instinct, you know, and your own passion, and not chasing a market. You know, you see people on TV who wanna get involved in music. And I always fear that they wanna get involved in music because they wanna be rich, or they wanna get involved in music because they wanna be famous. I've never met anyone rich and famous who started out wanting to be rich and famous. That is just not how it happens. That's kind of the worst reason to be a creator, involved in anything, let alone anything creative. And I think one of the other themes is, is how in music, you serve an apprenticeship. By just getting out of your house and hanging out with people. That, there wasn't like a, like, it's not like kind of one of those security doors where you press all the right buttons and you go through this door and it's happened for you. It's not like that. It's, you know, it takes years of hard work to become an overnight success. You know, it's that long process. But actually, all of it is great. You know, when I started out DJing at the Hacienda, I was, I was earning thirty quid a night. And I was getting the bus, the one oh one, getting off on Whitworth Street, walking up the road with my records in a cardboard box and playing from nine o'clock till two. And I was, in nineteen eighty-eight, when it all went huge, I was doing two nights and I was earning a hundred and thirty quid for those two nights. But I'd have done it for nothing. I didn't tell the management that, but I would have done it for nothing. And almost everything that I've done since, really, has evolved from that.
I think the other important theme is that if you'd have been on a panel like this, or we'd have been on a panel like this five or six years ago, we'd have all been saying, I'm a manager, I'm a label, I'm a publisher, I'm a DJ. And every one of us does many things now. And I think you have to do that. We do a bit of this and we do a bit and we do a bit of the other, because you have to, you know, you have to understand the full process of your artist's career. And we have to do a lot of little things, because the fees and the money has shrunk completely. You have to do many things.
And if you'd, I mean, obviously, we're, you know, some of us are of a more older generation than some of the others of us. But over the years, what have you kind of seen as the major change? Obviously, we talk about the music industry and the, and...
You're looking at me now, aren't you?
I'm looking at you now, yeah. Because you're about my age, shall we say?
Nearly thirty.
But what, if you must, again, if you were to kind of roll back, if you were starting out now, is there anything that you would change? Or do you feel like the same kind of principles apply?
I think you always do, you know, the, like I said before, hindsight's a great thing, you know, and being older, you know, older and wiser, you know, because you look back at the mistakes, or in Andy's case, not making any, you know, the things that you might change. I think it's a little bit like, you do get, the older you get, it's a bit like, you know, when you see that roundabout coming round, particularly with styles and fashion and so on. I think you do get better at spotting those macro factors, whatever they're called, you know, things that are kind of happening. You're thinking, you kind of, you get, you get feelings about, about things and you learn to go with your guts, really, on stuff. And I think, but I think those gut feelings, whatever they are, they get a lot more tuned, only because you've done so many things and you've made so many mistakes, or you can remember the last time you did this, don't do it quite like that because that might happen or that might happen, like, you know. I think from a personal point of view, thinking about, you know, more recently, I mean, going back a few years ago, ended up buying a club in Liverpool, which in fact, Scruff comes to, we ended up buying a club, which was another big mistake actually. It was one of those whimsical thing of three, me and two other friends, but buying a club in Liverpool, and then thinking, now what are we gonna do with it? Like, you know, and just didn't actually know what we're gonna do with it. But I think one of the things, the lesson that I'd learnt was, I wasn't going out as much then, you know, thinking I'm gonna be promoting as much and all that kind of stuff. I wasn't going out as much, but one of the key things I thought, well, go out and find people, younger people, who are doing it, who kind of look like the new kids on the block, if you want. And found these great promoters, these four kids, as it was at that time, doing a night called Chibuku, which was in a little tiny venue in Liverpool. And said, just spoke to them and said, look, what you're doing here is really, really good. But because I'm older and a little bit wiser, I think you could actually make this bigger, it could be a bigger thing than this. Cream was on its, on the downfall, you just knew that, you instinctively knew that, that it wasn't cool anymore and so on. These kids were really cool, they had all the right people going there for all the right reasons, you know, not to be seen there, but because it was a great place to go. And so bringing them into the club was a great thing. And then just, not advising them how to do it, just funded it, really giving them a bit of cash to make it go, make it go. And then just watching them kind of run with the ball, really, and having that kind of real urgency of the first time you ever did something. So that, that was a really, really important thing. And I think, you know, with the festivals that we do now, just knowing, going back to what we said before, you know, that the record industry, there's no money there really, but the live scene feels strong again, you know, it's absolutely, you know, there's, you know, there's, there's been a certain renaissance there. And so it felt right to start doing festivals, to start doing those types of things. So I think, you know, age and just learning from your mistakes really is, is very, very important. But it doesn't stop you making mistakes. Doesn't stop you making.
As, I'm enjoying this, but I would, I'm aware that I've not asked the audience yet if they have any questions. As I said, we are gonna be talking a bit more generally in the second half, but you have the, you know, the geniuses here on the sofas. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to ask any specific question to any of these individuals about the work they do? Or ask for any advice in anyone in the audience who wants to take this opportunity, wants to take the microphone?
No.
Nobody?
I have the mic.
Yeah, sorry, I need to pass you the mic so that you're...
Oh, your one, good.
I think it came into mind when you were talking about people of a certain age, because I think I might be of a certain age as well. But where do you take a career like this? You know, how, how do you see your future? Andy might be a, you know, tea magnet, but you know, what, what, what rest of you see doing in terms of succession planning? You know, who's gonna take over your businesses in the future? Or are they just gonna die with you?
I'm gonna ask Jane, I'm gonna ask Jane that question.
Well, with the record label, I'm still releasing records. And honestly, fewer and fewer people are buying them. But I'm more going into managing an artist and putting out their records as well. Because if not, you're kind of, you know, you're putting money into something and hardly seeing anything back. And I also run a club night as well, which in part is performance-based club night. And I've sort of worked, well, I've been funded by the Arts Council as well to do the club night. And I'm doing my first theatre production in the autumn at the Contact Theatre. So, you know, what I've kind of, you know, with the club, it's come from different spaces and sometimes building the spaces, working with artists locally, getting some money, bringing in international artists and national artists, and just learning contracts, learning how to work collaboratively, meeting, you know, the artistic director of the Contact Theatre, telling him my plans and him saying, you know, or let's, you know, develop a piece, let's develop a show, got that. So, you know, there's, you have to keep sort of all the time looking at where to go with things, really. And they just, I guess it just sort of happened naturally, you know, you meet someone, you put in someone and that. So, and, yeah, so, you know...
And I think also that, I mean, obviously that, what I was gonna ask you then was about whether it just happens, or whether you kind of lie awake at night thinking, oh, you know, where am I gonna be in the next year or two? I mean, you can do that, but it, but, like you say, it tends to be...
Yeah.
An opportunity just occurs. Because the thing is that the world needs creative people. You know, venues need events, you know, people need music to listen to, you know. So there's always gonna be a demand for your product, if you call it that, which are your ideas, you know, and whether it's a music-related one or it's a theatre one. And that's kind of why, you know, in the second half, I think, well, we can find, one of the things that I think we'll talk about is how small things can have significance. You know, you can do something that seems quite small and quite negligible, but it's kind of what happens after and what happens to the people who are inspired by that.
But Jane, what would you, I think, because you sort of started with a question, but what would you do if you decided to retire or do something else? What would happen to your business? Would that kind of continue flourishing just by the connections you've made and the kind of seeds that you've planted? Obviously, with you working, you know, basically helping the basement or the bottom floor clubroom in Islington Mill becoming a venue and stuff like that. So I suppose there's a legacy of things like that. But in terms of all the stuff that's, I suppose, much more personally yours, like your label and the artists and all the, you know, the events which you put your name to, could you ever see those happening without your involvement?
Not, not really, no. Because, what, you mean I just give you business over to someone and say, employ someone and say, right?
Yeah, because that was the kind, that was the sort of question, wasn't it? It was kind of what, what happens after.
These lifestyle businesses that really just revolve around you as the personality within them. Or is it something that you can pass on to somebody else? Or, you know, how do you keep reinventing yourself to do new things like Dave's talking about? You know, I suppose, you know, I know people that work in the music industry, I think, well, what are you gonna do when you're seventeen? It's like...
Still doing.
Where does it go, you know? How can you be cool? I don't know. You know, it's just a, it's full of those themes that I'm saying.
You don't need to be cool to be behind the scenes. My mission is to get more managers into this industry. Nobody, I do this. In fact, let's do it now. How many of you are musicians, artists, put your hand up? How many managers want to, I mean, everywhere I go, this happens, three, we need more people who can develop that. And it is my mission to train up young managers that can come and work under me and will do that. So I know where you're coming, absolutely. I mean, it's been a...
But also, it's like, there's a weird thing that happens in being involved in this, in that, certainly, a lot of it is down to individuals, you know, and very, very, and soul traders. But you can't exist without a team. Okay, so if I, for some reason, if I won the lottery on Saturday, right, well, I wouldn't give up my job. People never say that, people always say that anyway. But there's a lot of stuff that wouldn't happen if I just went off. But all the people who, the team, the various teams that I lock into, the teams of graphic designers, the teams of people who run venues, the teams of people who run fanzines, all those people will continue. And obviously, you kind of think, well, you'd have made a little different, you'd have shifted it on a little bit. And I kind of think that's how it works. It's about those individuals. But, you know, like when Mr. Scruff was talking about the nineties, he was talking about people like Barney, you know, who's, you know, who's kind of a floating soul trading, not, you wouldn't call him an entrepreneur, he's just like, he likes to make things happen. And there's lots of them around. So you're kind of... So you're kind of an individual in a network.
Yeah, I think if people stop, say if I stopped making music, I mean, it's difficult because everyone here is, or even if they're working in quite a managerial capacity or doing maybe some of the behind the scenes work, they've obviously got a very creative approach because if you're working with something which involves, you know, you're working with bands or DJs or technicians, everyone's got loads of great ideas and it's not something... You can give people skills, you can learn to play the guitar or whatever, or you can teach someone how to use a lighting desk, but then what they do with that knowledge, it's not like, I mean, obviously certain things like accountancy, if you're too creative, then you end up in jail, but I think, you know, if any of us stopped and there was no one to carry on, that gap would be filled like that. You know, there's a room full of people who want to get into it and there's not a lot of money around, but it's very enjoyable. And yeah, it's hard because it is a music business and we all make a living from it, but I'm sure all of us just fell into it because we like going out a lot and we like music and, you know, maybe if you're more of a managerial role, you just almost found yourself like in a parental role, like, you know, making sure DJs get a flight on time or something like that or putting on a club night, you end up, you find your spot in that, in that whole scene, you know, whether if, you know, if you're more organised, you might gravitate towards, you know, being a tech or a manager or a booker or an agent or something like that. But you might enjoy, you know, you might enjoy working with creative people, so that means you're a music agent rather than a travel agent, you know, I can't think of anything more boring than being a travel agent, but I'm sure people get a real buzz out of that. I think it's just responding to your own personal, you know, stimuli, seeing what you get a buzz out of and then a lot of the time that's just affected by your circumstances, who you're coming to contact with and if you're good at something, then you generally end up finding a place within that.
I think things like this are great because when I was at school, no one told me there was a job in the music industry that didn't, you know, I didn't have to play or sing, you know, there's a whole team, a whole network of jobs, real jobs that are there if you're good at it and even quite simply, sometimes I use this analogy about the kid that carries the box of records for the DJ, you know, actually that is a job, that could be a tour manager's job and nobody tells anyone that they can do that. I mean, my worst nightmare is, and I often have this, that somebody pushes me on stage and says, entertain them. I mean, I can't think of anything worse, I don't know how these people do it, but I love music and I know I wanted to be involved in it and there are many people like that and these things like this are great because it's like, you know what, there is a job out there and you can earn money from it and it may tap into your talents that may not be about creating music.
Also, it's the skills that, there are quite a few of the skills that you can pick up in our industry which are transferable, you know, there's, when I did a fanzine back in the mid nineteen eighties, there was a guy who used to say, can I design a front cover, can I design a front cover? So I let him design a front cover and five or six years later, he started working for Reebok, he works for Manchester City, he's like a top, top graphic designer and there's a guy who used to do the flyers and again, he used to do the flyers for nothing, for clubs that I ran because he just wanted to be involved. And again, it became part of his portfolio and now he kind of designs cans of lager for fosters and people. So he's kind of gone off doing other things, but that was the beginning, that was his way in, that was kind of his key that kind of unlocked for him what he wanted to do.
I was going to talk about skills being transferable. When, I don't know if you're all here, earlier when Rachel was talking, she's a sinking agent. What I do for a living, plugging, I have to go in and basically, you know, do the sell to radio people and presenters and I, a few years ago, was thinking about, yeah, what am I going to do? You know, the plugging world is getting saturated, there's no money in it. So I was thinking about doing the sinking, you know, going down the sinking route, so I've done a couple of trips over to LA to meet the sinking people, so I'm going to transfer my skills as a plugger and meeting those Americans, they were just blown away because I had those skills, so I could, you know, do the sell on them without making it obvious. And also with my, with my background and my, what they thought was my hit rate of finding new emerging artists, that went on to be absolutely huge, they wanted that, they were saying, you're perfect for this, you're absolutely perfect for this role because, you know, they're pretty similar, they really are. Going back to, it's something we were saying before as well about getting into the music industry, I think a lot of people think it's really easy, think it's really, really, really glamorous. I've recently, I employed a couple of people and, well, about three years ago, employed a couple of people and they really loved doing the job, but what they didn't want to do, I think everybody on here, there's something like the thread that runs through it, we all work incredibly hard, really, really, really long hours and we just keep on going. These kids that came to work for me, they just didn't want to do the work, they wanted to hang out with the bands, you know, they wanted to party with the bands and they wanted to, you know, go on the trips and go around to the radio stations, but when it actually came to any of the really, really tough stuff, they were like, oh no. And they didn't last, they just wanted to go on somewhere else where they could hide behind a desk, you know, they wanted to work in a normal office so that they could have their nine to five, have a lunch hour, you know, get the holidays, because in the music industry, you know, sometimes, you know, you don't get those holidays, you know, you're not going home at six o'clock, five o'clock, you're going out to a gig at night and I think you've got to take that into account, it's like, you know, it's, when you're thinking about getting into the music industry, it's actually really, really, really hard work.
Yeah, and obviously the reward isn't always financial, you know, the reward is doing what you love and, you know.
It's great when both things happen, when you get, you know, financially, you know, you make some money out of it, but a lot of the time, I think again, you do it for the love of it really.
Just maybe one more question before we have our comfort break. Anyone want to put a question to the panel?
Dave, I just wanted to, do you recall this?
Sorry, Dave, you sound, I need you to sound stronger.
The Spiritualised Packaging, do you remember those? The, I had an unsigned artist in my studio last week and showed it to him, first time he'd ever seen it and he was blown away by it. Do you find, think it's a sad day that budgets aren't there anymore for, to do that kind of work?
Sorry, can you say the last bit again?
The money and the budgets just aren't there to do that kind of work anymore?
No, they're not, but you see, when I first started designing, you see, I also teach graphic design as well at Stowport College and there's, for a long time, when I first started teaching, everybody wanted to design record sleeves. Every piece of graphic design that used to, you know, come through the studio was square and that big, because that's what a record was, you know. And then eventually they started doing stuff that was that big, right? And now they've done stuff that just isn't tangible, you know, it's not needed within, you know, it's not needed for downloads, it's not that tangible element anymore, so...
Does that make you sad?
It makes me hugely sad. It's, it's, it sort of depends what generation you're from, but it's like, it's like if you take music out of opera, you know, it's just like, you can't, I'm from an age where design and music, that's what it was. I bought hundreds of records just for the sleeve, you know, hundreds of records just because of the sleeve, you know.
So design for a digital format is not as exciting?
I don't know enough about it really, I kind of think it doesn't exist. Every time I try and download music and pay for it from my daughter or whatever, I still feel like I'm stealing because it's just like, it's coming off the computer and the sleeve's not there, it's not, it's not, it's still not real for me, really. But it's, yeah, it's, if the question really was, does it make me sad? It makes me so unbelievably sad, it's horrible. But it is, it's just like, you know, again, it's like taking graphic design out of film or taking, you know, fabric out of fashion. For me, that's what it's like, it's just, you know, it's, it is. What does anybody else think? I mean, is it the end of an era? I mean, I find it really, really, really hard to believe that vinyl is pretty much dying because, because the last few months, I've noticed more than ever, you know, it's like, it's been, it's been sort of on the decline for sort of like the past ten years and there's always been people saying, oh yeah, but vinyl sounds so much superior and stuff like that. I mean, I like vinyl because it's old, I like records because they're old and because it can hold them and they're of a size, but, you know, whether it sounds better is...
I think it could be a case of record labels trying to make money and basically, you know, remarketing it, saying, you know, you know, it sounds better, you've got to have it and then people going, I want to have that, you know, I want to have that limited edition vinyl. So then it kind of creates, you know, this kind of, you know, world around vinyl.
People start to see through that though, don't they, I think?
Maybe.
I think so, yeah, and that's why, that's why the death knells upon us.
The reason I say that is because, you know, I used to be privy to those huge meetings, those huge marketing meetings in major record labels, I'd have to go down to London and sit there and listen to them and they'd be like, coming up with ideas of how we're going to make more money out of these people and one of the things was, you know, we're going to bring back vinyl. So these bands that would never even, you know, some of them were so young, they never even knew what vinyl was, but they'd come out with an album, which had a double album in vinyl and, you know, they'd hardly sell any of them and this was like going about six years ago. But now it's suddenly, you know, I keep reading about it now, I keep hearing, you know, vinyls, everybody wants vinyl, everyone wants vinyl. Another thing was, you know, working, having your own little record label, there was this story that went around a lot, you'll remember this Pete, you know, you have to do some vinyl, you know, you have to do five hundred limited vinyl, they'll sell, they all sell, they'll sell out. And I did a bit of research and I actually found out that most of the people who said that they sold out of that vinyl were lying. So people were wasting money, going off to bloody, paying money in checkers of packets of five hundred limited editions.
Don't say that, I'm just about to do that.
Well, we'd use them for promo. So we'd send them to a handful of radio DJs who we knew loved vinyl, who were, you know, over forty years old and we'd send it to them, but all the others, you know, I'd go to the radio stations, you know, some of the biggest radio stations in the country and you see their boxes, they have these plastic boxes where they throw the records or the CDs that they don't want, vinyls in there and those, they don't throw them away, they get sent to a shop, you know, who then, you know, a specialist shop where the nerdy people go in and, you know, flick through them and then they want to buy the vinyl, you know, about three pounds a time. I'm really, I don't know if I agree with the whole vinyl thing.
It's niche though, isn't it? I mean, we're just going to release in September a seven inch vinyl on Face Panda, our old school great label and the artist is doing her own artwork and it's great, you know, and but our target is five hundred copies, whereas when I was at London Records, our target for vinyl sales, week one was eighty thousand, you know, I mean, that's the difference now. It is niche, it is collectible, it's still lovely and I have my album covers all the world.
Can I just, I think it is really sad though, just going back to what Andy said, it is dead sad, but sharing stories about kids again, Andy, you'd have thought we'd have been doing this, sharing stories about kids, but my son, who's twelve now, actually said to me, going back a few months ago, said, Dad, will you stop talking to my mates about CDs and records because they think I'm a geek? You know, and you keep telling me about CDs or albums that you bought me and stuff like that, they think it's dead geeky. The cool thing for kids is an iPhone or something that they download their music to and paying for it, if you pay for it, you're the biggest geek in the playground because getting it for nothing is the absolutely coolest thing for them to do, you know.
I'm going to have to just...
But in, answered or related directly to your question, the really important thing about that, with that Spiritualised Packaging, the music was there and it was brilliant and everyone knew it and everyone knew that the music warranted that packaging and after that, a lot of people did amazing packaging with really shit music. It was the biggest con, do you know what I mean? And record buyers and people who bought music habitually, you know, whether they liked it or not, they had to buy music, they could see right through that. And one of the greatest independent labels to come through sort of dance music and indie to, so one of the biggest labels to sort of mesh that, that was their downfall because they spent loads and loads and loads of money on packaging, you couldn't buy, you know, you couldn't buy one single with like a two minute track on without having 3D glasses and a hologram and something that jumped out of you. And it was a big con and everyone could see right through that. I mean, the thing with my label, which was very proud of, people would pick up the packaging and go, that packaging is brilliant, but instead of going, how much, wow, that's brilliant, how much did it cost, I bet it cost a fortune, people thought, that's brilliant and it must have cost nothing and that was the beauty of it. So I think the main thing with Spiritualised, that was the, they wanted that medal, do you know what I mean, to have that beautiful packaging, but it wasn't profitable.
Okay, I do want to just take a comfort break, although I'm getting, the boss is waving. We're taking one look, we're taking questions from the back. Sorry.
Jane, just a sort of last comment on what Andy was saying. I mean, I run a tiny little label and I've never made a penny off it, it's all sort of not for profit and everything, but I think the design will always, always, always be there for, for the geeks, for the people that do this for passion and there are, there are people that just love the whole package and love to hold something in their hands and there always will be those sort of people and I always work with just little independent illustrators or you get someone to knit it or you make a bit out of wood or anything like that and the same with finders keepers, similar sort of a geekish, collectible sort of love.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll ever go away, it just depends whether you're talking about the music industry, capital M, capital I, or the music lover.
And the way I see it, the music industry doesn't even exist, we're starting it again, every day somebody else is starting it, you know, all, most of the stuff that we can tell you about what we did and the history doesn't even, isn't even relevant now, starting again from this point onwards, do you know what I mean?
And I also think there is, you know, there is a bit of, there is a lo-fi revolution, isn't there? You know, for every...
Thatcherews will never die.
For everything, it's always a reaction.
Everyone's always going to love Thatcherews, aren't they?
Okay, we're going to have a ten minute break, just want to leave you with this, there's a guy called Richard Boone who started one of the first independent record labels in Manchester in the post punk era, it was before Factory Records and all that kind of stuff. And he started his record label New Hormones to put out records by the Buzzcocks and they would all gather and glue the sleeves together, they would do that hard work back in nineteen seventy seven and Richard Boone has this great quote, which is, goes to the heart of what we're going to talk about in the second half. And he said that the whole point of what he was doing in music was to make the place you happen to be living in, the place you want to be living in. And that's what we're going to be discussing in the second half, okay, in about ten minutes' time. Okay, so we'll make a start and then we can, we're finished dead on eight thirty, which is our, our closing time. Obviously, one of the reasons why Creative Lancashire brought us all together today is to talk specifically about Lancashire, Preston and Lancaster particularly, Blackpool also, I don't know if there's any representatives from Blackpool here, but one of the things we hope, yes, on the front row, in the mosh pit, one of the things that would be useful to do in the next forty five minutes is to try and, it's kind of slightly academic, but hopefully it'd be fun as well, to kind of make a list of what are the ingredients that you need in a city like Preston, which of course is a city? What ingredients do you need in order to make things happen, in order for people to think, I can stay here, I don't have to move to Manchester, I don't have to move to London, I can do what I want to do here, I can fulfil my dream here, I have a job here. And obviously the music industry historically has had a role to play in that. You know, you look at Manchester and music as a catalyst for regeneration was played out in Manchester at the end of the eighties into the nineties. And by music, I don't just kind of mean bams, I mean all this, I mean even fashion designers, you know, if you've got, if you've got a few venues that are happening, people need to go out and buy some clothes, you know? Bams have to buy clothes. Friends of mine started out little boutique businesses in the mid nineteen eighties, never sold anything and then when the club scene started to develop, suddenly people were going in there. So there's numerous ways that people can benefit from what old people like me call a happening scene, okay? I think one of the things that we have to, one of the kind of big questions is whether we actually need a local scene because obviously with digital media, you can make contacts and you can make networks all over the world, but we haven't got time for that philosophical discussion and in my opinion, I think that the two things, ideally the two things work together. You know, ideally you have somewhere down the road where you can fulfil your dream, somewhere that is a real physical place and then the digital space becomes something extra. It doesn't have to be either or. So if I can start off, I'm actually going to do it in a kind of academic way, I'm going to make like a list of things, maybe a wish list, if we could wave a magic wand, what would be in Preston or Lancashire right now? What is it, is that some weird ringtone?
It's a little rave going on round.
There's a happening scene behind the screen. Okay, one of the things I want to say is, first off, as a, as, as a kind of, not in any particular order, but one thing I think that places need is colleges and or universities. And the reason for that is, first off, there's always an influx of new people coming in, new energy, young people coming in wanting to do something different. You know, all the places in Britain where things are happening, where, places where you might want to stay. Uh, you know, all, 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 all the places in, in Britain where things are happening, where, places where you might wanna stay, are places where, through colleges. In music, there's always been an art school tradition going back to, you know, John Lennon and the Beatles. Um, but also if you have universities and colleges, uh, you kind of have places where you can have maybe vocational courses, where people can learn the technical skills or the business skills. Uh, where it might be marketing, it might be new media, all those kind of skills to, to be brought to bear. And so that's kind of number one. And I kind of chose that because I know that that is one thing that Preston and Lancaster have got. So before we start getting into a list of all the things that are missing, you know, that is a key thing. There's already a key thing in this city. Uh, you know, the, the colleges and the universities around here, they make a difference. Um, and without them, you'd be Doncaster basically, so count your lucky stars.
Uh, yeah, can I, can I, there's a little, um, story, because I've done quite a lot of research on this, in Pennine, Lancashire in particular. And it was something that Tony Wilson started and his partner Yvette, back in two thousand and five. And they brought him in to say, what, you know, what can we do here? Well, how can we help the music scene here? Um, and he went away and he, he came back and he just said, oh, you, you know, you need more live music. That, you need, you need more gigs, this is what makes a, a place great, this is what you need. And what was happening up there was that a lot of the big halls were run by the council. And therefore they, they, they were going from a kind of really cost basis, saying, how much will it cost us to open this venue tonight? Da, 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 da. What do we need to charge for the ticket in order to open this venue? And it'd be eight quid or something. So they ended up booking the Grumbleweeds and shit like that. You've got a very conservative booking policy, which stops any kind of funky or hard, anything new happening. So they brought me in to have a look at this and say, how, how can this happen? And I went round and I spent a good eighteen months, it's still ongoing, finding out who was out there and how, how it could change. And amazingly, after we'd done like this mapping exercise, we found there was over two hundred unsigned bands in the area and two hundred little micro music businesses, all operating in isolation and not knowing who was doing what. What there wasn't was the kid who went out there, booked the venue, booked the van, sold the tickets. There were no independent music promoters. And the reason for that was that if it wasn't the Grumbleweeds, it'd be a pub that had covers bands on, where they wouldn't charge a ticket price, uh, because the landlord was making a butty on the bar. So there was a couple of, uh, music promoters that really wanted to do something different. And they were actually losing money. So landlord would say, yeah, put the band or bring the band in, he'd have to get his own P A in. Landlord was happy, he was bunging the, the band fifty quid to pay and he was making money on the bar. The promoter was going home minus a hundred quid. You know, it's like, uh, so that therefore there is no live music promoters and the scene dies. So that's what we're kind of looking at up there. It, I don't believe there's a lack of great bands and great people who want to do things in these areas. It's just the people who can make it happen and things like this, like I said before, and the education of it all will help that. And we're putting together a whole raft of help and courses to help, including we're working with Sound City to make something unique. And hopefully we're gonna create about twelve or fourteen new shows a year that has a purpose. But we'll be training the promoters to make a living out of it. So that, no, it's up in Pennine, Lancashire, but I think, you know, it's, it can, it's everywhere, isn't it? It doesn't have to be a, well, the venue, yeah, they've, they've got the venues up there, that's the thing, I don't know what, you've got fifty-three. But is that gone?
Venues like that you wanna, I wish I put a nine on Preston before. Every time you put a nine on Preston, I have the club guys, or nobody turns up like.
But that's the marketing, isn't it? That's the learning how to market it properly.
We had, um, two line ready bands. And, you know, it's a, a nine of covers, every type of music. There was like a thousand people went to Tokyo, do you know what I mean?
But Dave's right insofar as that, that, that you have a university and that there's a, there's that ethos. A lot of unis have their entertainment officers, don't they, that put on gigs?
What do fifty-three parties do? What can they get it on?
It's great.
Lot of bands like, commercial bands, do you know what I mean? But it's not what everyone's after. Yeah, Buzzcocks.
What's that place next door to fifty-three parties? That's quite funky, isn't it?
Mad Ferret.
Yeah, that's great. Use that, people go in there.
But like, you can't go in Mad Ferret and have reggae bands and like funk, well, yeah, you can have funk, yeah, but.
Yeah, you can do anything.
But you don't really have to, have to limit it to venues, do you? I mean, is that what you really want? I mean, I, I, I've travelled the world more so in the last five years than ever. And there might have amazing gigs I've been to around at people's houses and, you know, and in weird venues. And if you don't sit in, there's no venues, there's loads of cities without any venues because it's not, it's not easy, you know, not, businessmen aren't, aren't brave enough to start up venues. And for the, it's a vicious circle really, because they, they say there's not a vibrant music scene to keep it going. So we went up in the venue and it'll stay like that forever. But what's wrong with like, you know, three or four bands getting together and, and buying a P A together? Because I mean, I'd like to do that right now and then start, you know, doing stuff in, in, in like church halls and stuff like that. Because the idea of going to the Women's Institute and doing a gig seems like, no way, there's a gig at the Women's Institute? Brilliant, and you've just bought a P A and you can start all these gigs at the Women's Institute, isn't it? You know, that's how it's gotta be. Because otherwise you probably be doing a gig in a club which you don't think the decor really suits your band too well. But, but people don't seem to do that, people don't, I mean, Manchester's a win anyway because it's spoilt, there's too many venues. But I mean, you know, and they're never really right for the, for the, for the spoilt people of Manchester anyway. But you go to some places like, you know, if you go to Poland or ex-communist countries, there's no venues at all. But people chip in, buy P As and then you've got a scene, it's awesome, do you know what I mean? And it's, that's more exciting than anything I've ever seen in Manchester or bloody New York, you know, so, there's, there's buildings here.
Hmm?
That's ace, yeah.
Yeah, you get, there's like, two of the free parties comes festivals like these, they're doing that. That's like a local festival, all the free party groups got together and, you know, make this festival and cap it at five thousand, so it's okay.
But is, is it, I mean, in Preston Caribbean communities, the, the Preston carnival's like, it's world strong, isn't it? It's massive, you know, but, you know, I mean, so it can happen, you know? Did it? No, because it didn't fall down?
But you, you, your question was about venues, but you've, you've already kind of argued against yourself by agreeing what Andy said. Yes, so results, so that's one thing you've taken away from today. There's, there's a point of trying to trill be there.
Hi, um, me and a friend are actually organising something in Preston, uh, exactly what we're all here talking about. Uh, it's not just music based, it's to bring together all the creative people of Preston and, um, to network and to showcase what they've got. It's called Harvest Preston for a shameless plug. And, um, we're actually starting with a festival across, uh, several venues, across the Mad Ferret and some other venues, um, in September. And we're trying to do exactly what we're talking about here, because there's no reason it shouldn't be going on in Preston. Um, it's a big enough city, it's got a brilliant university and it's just been struggling to happen. Um, so basically me and my friend have just decided to make it happen.
You know, and to, to defer that, you know, that is the only spirit you can work in. You can't wait for somebody to come into Preston and make it happen. You know, everyone who's started out promoting events, putting events on, have done it because they, they want somewhere good to go, you know, they want somewhere where their, them and their mates can hang out, you know? They're not necessarily doing it to make lots of money.
We've made my mate do, um, the zine that you've got today and self-publishing and all that. And we found it being useful being from Preston, because it's a bit of a selling point, a unique selling point, you know? Where people, um, say where's that? And it's a good starting point and that. And we publish our own photography books and sell them worldwide now. But being from Preston has been the unique element to it really, so we found that really useful, so.
I think there's a problem with, 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 with zines where people think it's a bit retrograde, but it, it just isn't. It's the, the human element and that tangible thing which you'll just never, if you, if you wanna get people away, uh, what, like Dave, I think said, get people away from the internet or the internet just being a, 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 a handy by-product to the whole scene. I mean, you know, the physicality of, of a fanzine is hugely important.
We do both, so we've done that zine, but then we've also done this, an app, so people have a way to get it.
Right, yeah.
All the images and everything are from Preston and the app has it all marked on, plenty of the images taken, it's marked on a map of Preston. So people outside of Preston can explore the city.
I mean, that was, uh, on, on the, uh, the kind of list of ingredients I'd pre-prepared in a kind of, uh, Blue Peter style. That, uh, a zine is on that list, you know? Because again, uh, people who are wanting to do stuff, they need to know that at least one person in the media, so-called, might be interested in it, okay? You probably don't think of yourselves as the media, but just knowing that there's an outlet, somebody might, might be listening. And it is about trying to create those little cells of activity around something like a scene.
Not necessarily to get people to contribute to ours, but to get people to do theirs is the idea. To get people focusing on the city itself, rather than looking at, because, I mean, I teach in the union, we have all these students who, all they do is disappear off to Manchester or London and that. And we wanted them to focus their work on the city itself, so that was kind of the idea of it. So hopefully more people will start doing that.
Okay, and there's people on the local evening paper who write about stuff as well, is there?
There is, but we've not had much luck with that really.
Okay.
The only thing they're not in particularly, but they can't. On the day of Saturday.
Right, okay, uh, one of the other things I was, uh, I kind of written down on, on this list of things is role models, because I'm kind of thinking that's, if you're looking at, there's obvious, obviously activity, there's obviously ideas in somewhere like Preston or Lancaster, that's obvious, you know, I mean, we can say it even here. But sometimes you feel like there isn't, aren't people locally that you can point to? I mean, I always think of my mate Bez, okay? And I always think, well, if Bez can make a living out of the music industry, who can't? Do you know what I mean? Um, and obviously it's not everyone's idea of a great role model, bless him. But at least he's there, you know, and I'm kind of thinking, is that something that, is there in Preston or, or, or Lancaster? That sense of, uh, a kind of a tradition?
Bill Shankly.
Bill Shankly?
Well, he started in Preston, didn't he?
Did he?
I, I think what you, what should be on this is balls. Because, and I'm not talking about, you know, gentlemen, I just think you've gotta be ballsy, you've gotta have confidence and take risks. And, you know, and that's kind of what you're encouraged, and what probably the role models would encourage you to do. Sorry about that, I hope you heard that. But I just think, you know, what Tony did, took balls really, you know, he just went and did stuff. And I, you know, I know that that's partly because of his upbringing and his background, he had confidence. You know, and I think that's what a lot of, of young people may be impressed in are lacking, is that confidence to just go out and, and try it and make mistakes.
Is it just the young people in Preston who need to be ballsy or is it some of the, uh, the authorities or potential funders?
No, you're right, you've got to have, you've got to have, uh, the right environment for them to be able to take those risks in. But I suppose really that energy is gonna come from young people really, I think.
I think you've got to be pretty pushy with it.
Yeah.
Because I think with that project, you know, we use empty shops to gather and stuff, it's ages and ages to get them, they don't, as they say, yeah? And then after that, you're doing all sorts of things.
I mean, this is, you know, creativity across the board, I think. Anybody who sets up a creative company has got to have a certain amount of arrogance actually to do it. Because they've gotta believe in themselves and I think that's a good thing, yeah, I think that's a good thing. It can also be their downfall, you know, if they can't manage that. But you've got to, yeah, you've gotta be pretty pushy to, and, and kind of bluff your way through sometimes and still get what you want.
I think what you often find is that kind of pushy individual, um, it then turns out actually has some sympathetic people who gravitate towards them. You know, that, that's kind of in a way the role of the, those individual people, I think, that, you know, there's, someone goes out on a limb and then suddenly there's lots of other people who, suddenly the light goes out on in their heads and they think, okay, we've got, again, what us old fashioned people call a crew, you know what I mean? But that's, you know, if you're on your own, there's not much you can do. If you've got a crew, you can change the world, it's been proved over and over again.
I love that idea, it really resonates with me and keeping what Dave said, but how about the idea of an anti-role model? Because you, you seem a little bit bitter about all your mates going to London and, and Manchester and leaving Preston behind. I just love that idea of like an anti-Manchester thing, because I know it worked for Liverpool and Manchester, having like, you know, and, and if you could generate that vibe that you don't need Manchester, you don't need to go to Manchester. It, it, that sort of anti-role model thing's beautiful, to keep people there is ace.
And the interesting thing we, we do is about Preston.
It's just ace, you know, I'd love it, I mean, you know, I'd, I'd love it if people started going out in Preston and.
The other side of that is not just the anti-Manchester, but being dead proud about being from Preston.
It's about having some civic pride, I mean, Tony had civic pride, didn't he?
Absolutely, I mean, talking about Tony's coming up a few times, because I, I worked in the city with him and I was always so jealous about the fact that that was there, because I felt like Liverpool was the obvious place for it, you know? Because we had the Beatles and because we, you know, we think about. Do you have the Beatles? I'm fed up of reading about fucking Joy Division now and the Assi Endo, well, fuck you now, get on with it. The Beatles were big in the sixties as well, you know? It's kind of a, you know, but, but you know, that, that thing about wanting to do it there, because Liverpool's the obvious choice. Manchester's the second choice and Liverpool's obviously.
The fact that you can't identify a number of things from Preston is what's so good about it.
That's what's great about it, that's what's absolutely fantastic. And doing things in the most, I mean, we have talked to two ladies then about the most unlikely places in the world, as Andy was saying.
And I saw that in variety, you know? But that's what's like, work, expedition all over the place, you know, just from that. But the fact is people have never heard of it, that's the point. I think that's the thing about, sorry to interrupt, but that's what's going on in Preston, just like in Manchester, I don't know. Like, there's a lot of people around who are really creative and good. But there's no, there's no organisation, you know, people feel that nothing happens here. And I think that's probably, I wouldn't say that, but I imagine that's kind of what's going on in Manchester for like Tony.
Well, just recently actually, I mean, well, not recently, but when there was that explosion with Nine Black Outs and Long Cup and all those bands, they didn't wanna, they were kind of border Manchester and they didn't wanna get sucked into that. So they had their house parties in Wellington and, and, and Rusho. And suddenly they were just doing it for themselves to have a good time and the names on it, you know, this is fabulous. And suddenly it became a scene that they didn't really, they, they weren't doing it for that. They were just doing it to have fun with their mates and that could have been anywhere.
Uh, the, um, oh, someone's already got the microphone.
Um, I just, I just gonna say, not, not, it's not so much civic pride you need sometimes, it's civic anger. And, and, and you take Salford as a good example, they said sod you Manchester and they got up and did it themselves and they've done it brilliantly. Um, Sounds from the Other Cities doing amazingly well. Um, it's the anger that like the organisers of Unconvention had against the sort of larger ones and they did it themselves and they're doing really well as well. And, and you, you can't wait for someone else to organise it, you know, if you're saying there's no one else around, you just do it yourself. For like, I came from a town called Cheltenham, which about was culturally active as that chair. You know, there's really was nothing particularly happening and everyone.
You've got a ladies' college though, haven't you?
Yeah, that.
I thought it was great growing up in a, in a town with a ladies' college.
Where everyone seemed like a bit of rough, it was great. It was, um, but you know, and, and everyone was moaning and saying there's nothing happening here. So I said, well, sod you then, let's do something. And, and, you know, I said, right, I'm gonna book those Americana act called Micah P. Hinson. They said, you never get him over here. I said, well, give it a bash, you know, what's the worst that can happen? And it's the same with anything, you know, just if someone says you can't do something, that's the best impetus to go out and do it. And, um, all the best promoters I've ever seen, like the sort of younger ones, there's a bunch called Damn You in Nottingham. They said, right, ATP are doing all these alternative American acts, they're bringing over everyone, you know, Pavement or whatever. And people said, well, you can't do that in Nottingham. And, you know, to this day, they're now doing fantastic gigs. So it's, it's, it's one of those like put up or shut up things and, and to a certain extent, in, in the worst culturally devoid situation you're in, that's the best sort of situation you can be in really, because otherwise you get lazy and you get flaccid and that's what a lot of cities tend to do.
And you can't get a venue anyway. If you wanna do a hip, if you wanna do a hip hop night, there's no point because there's already a British hip hop night, a west coast hip hop night, a skate hip hop night. And it's about, you know, where your night's probably the only thing happening that weekend, so like hopefully a video comes.
Uh, okay, do you have a young lady with a mic?
Um, I'm Gemma and I work for Creative Lancashire and, um, I think the team love trying to do something in Preston and the rest of Lancashire. Especially when your mates go, where do you live again? in Preston and the rest of Lancashire, especially when your mates go, where do you live again? And then one of your friends comes to you, sorry, I'm going to have to drag you into this, and me and we've sort of followed each other, we used to work in Salford together, and both of us were like, things can happen here, there's good people here, and gives me a business plan and goes, what do you think of that, thinking about a pub, well, leasing a pub, and it was like, yep, right, took me to it, and it looked like someone had just had a bum fight and left it, didn't it, it was absolutely trashed, and it'd fallen into their own cans, but, and we're all going there in about an hour or whatever, to the Conti, and set up a really good food venue, and a social enterprise on the side for arts and culture, and it's thriving, I mean, full credit, a beer festival a few months ago, five thousand people in the back garden of the Conti, I think, really sorry if I'm going to drag you into it about why you did it, and, you know, because it's a real success story.
Thanks for that, Gemma. The reason why we did it was because we had come back from Manchester, where I'd been living for about ten years, and came back here because of the credit crunch and because I was pregnant, and thought, okay, we'll come home for a bit, we'll come home for a year, and then we'll go back out into the big wide world. When we got here, credit crunch happened, we thought very ridiculously, there's a big place, there's a big venue, no one's doing anything with it, it's been closed for eighteen months, I know, let's create a pub and make something happen right here, because we couldn't move, there was no way we were going back anywhere else in the near future, so we thought there isn't actually anything else in Preston that's happening, so let's try and make something happen here. And I can see your point about there being no venues in Preston, and I can also very much see your point about the fact that you have to do things in church halls, and you should be doing things in dishes, warehouses, that's where things really happen. I guess for me, I wanted to find a home for my sort of creative enterprise, if you will, and I managed to find that home in Preston. Does that answer that? What was the secret?
Social media helped, because people were really curious about that pub, it wasn't their favourite pub, it was like, ooh, somebody bought it on the internet.
Yeah, I think, well, in Preston terms, it was just general nosiness from everyone else, which was great, and obviously with the internet and being able to connect people very, very easily through Facebook and through Twitter and through having a website and the rest of it, also, it was going out and finding people in Preston who wanted to do things like we wanted to do things, and making sure that other people will come in to us and put in events on with us, and the rest of it, really, and a lot of good hard slog.
The one thing about when we're talking about venues and lack of venues, one of the things that I think is worth bearing in mind is, it's not always live music venues that are needed, sometimes it's just a space where you can, somewhere that is, where sympathetic people, like-minded people can gather and have a beer, or gather and have a coffee, you know, and maybe it's a bit of a theatre space, maybe it's somewhere where you could put on some spoken word stuff, or, you know, some poetry or something like that, just so that instead of everyone being sat at home thinking, this fuck all on, there's actually a space where people are together, you know, that live event, that sense of a live event, whatever the event is, is something very special about that, and so it isn't always about where can we put a band on, something that's just about, well, where can we hang out? Yeah.
Yeah, could I, I personally don't think location is all that important, I'm from Stockport originally, I live in a little village called Wally now, near Clitheroe, that probably nobody's ever heard of it, I work in a town called Great Harwood in Lancashire, which is a bit of a rundown place, with nothing at all, and very, very high unemployment. The two factors I feel are important and possibly, you know, would not have a chance to discuss tonight, are quality control and differentiation, because I think, it's like, I've spent most of my career outside the music industry, running businesses, and one of the things that, say for instance, if you wanted to open a sandwich shop in Preston, and you go to a street where there's ten sandwich shops already, but if you're going to open another sandwich shop, you've either got to have a big differentiation that's going to make you stand out above the others, whether it be price, different types of food or whatever, or you'll go to another street and not open next to ten others, and I think on the quality control, I've listened to music all my life, I've just this year had the conviction to put my passion into action and do something about it, but I've listened to bands from the sixties onwards, and I think there's been mention all through the evening and through the day about great bands, I think it's probably, I mean, I would say anyway, that even over the last forty years, there've not been that many great bands worldwide, when you're talking about the term great, you know, the adjective great, so I think we better look at that quality control factor, and be honest, I think, with ourselves and the differentiation, and back to the point, I think the chap mentioned on the panel about the success, what is success, it's different for each of us, and I think that, the quality control, the differentiation, what you want to achieve and what you want to go, I think those, to me, are critical issues, you've got to believe in yourself, location doesn't come into it at all, and depending on what your aims and objectives are, I think then, you know, you've got to say, right, well, how am I going to differentiate myself, there's millions of people making music, there's not millions of people making great music, there never have been, there never will be, there are lots of great musicians, there's always millions of great musicians, but, you know, how are you going to differentiate? But what is your objective of success? If it's just to be successful in Preston, you know, then find a blueprint for that, but if it's to be successful globally, then it's a different blueprint, and, you know, how are you going to achieve that, and how are you going to apply your quality control and your differentiation? And I'd like to hear the guys on the panel speak a little bit more about that quality control and the differentiation factor.
Well, I think that, I mean, it's a good kind of dose of reality that you bring to the discussion, you know, when you talk about quality control. This morning, somebody sent me a link, and it said, the five people you have to get to know in Manchester, if you're an on-side band and you want to get anywhere, and I was number two, okay? And I emailed the person who wrote the list, and I said, but I only like kind of one out of every two hundred and fifty bands who come from Manchester, and she said, that's exactly why you're on that list, you know, because rather than just say automatically every band from Manchester is great, you know, and there's quite a few people in the media who will do that, especially in Manchester, that, you know, I've always thought, well, you're up against the rest of the world, you know, you're up against music history, you know, I always kind of say, bands want to give me a demo, I say, well, is it as good as I Want to Be Your Dog by The Stooges, because if it isn't, I don't want to listen to it, you know, and that immediately sorts out a good couple of hundred, you know, and so I think that's important, but at the same time, you need people to have the space to develop, you know, they might not start out as the finished article, and in fact, that's one of the benefits of being in Preston is that bands or artists or DJs can make, can evolve without being in the public glare, because there is no glare, you know, and so maybe sometimes, you know, you have to give people the benefit of the doubt.
It's that old story, isn't it, the Happy Mondays one, when there's an A and R guy in the audience, and he turns to Tony and says, Tony, I can't hear the hit, and he said, well, that's because they've not written it yet, you know, you do have to start small, and the Mad Ferret, fantastic small venue, coming back to venues, if it's popular, you will outgrow that venue and have to move to bigger premises, but great place to start with a bunch of your mates who then all tell ten mates, that's how it happens. I've not been to the Continental, I'm really sorry, but I am now looking forward to coming.
Okay, yeah, a contribution from.
Yeah, just back to something else from Tony Wilson as well, this idea of peaks and troughs within sort of scenes, if you will, I mean, I've certainly seen it in Preston, and it did sort of peak, unfortunately, with the one big weekend, but also, there were a lot of venues that sort of built up, and it ended up that it was to a saturation point, and it's a great time to have something like this now, because it feels like it's sort of starting to build again, but I was just going to ask the sort of panel, have you sort of experienced these peaks and troughs, and how have you sort of survived them, you know?
Mr Scruff, peaks, troughs.
Yeah, I mean, I think, if, I mean, basically, anyone who's making a living from music, unless they're Susan Boyle or whatever, is going to make a modest living and probably make half as much as what they were making about seven or eight years ago, you have to work twice as hard for half as much, really, so I think, but then financially, you know, as long as you don't have to go back to QuickSave, then to me, I'm doing all right, I can still buy some tunes, I think creatively, I'm involved in lots of different kinds of music, so, you know, if there's not much good hip-hop around, there's probably some amazing reggae, or there's always some amazing fifty or sixty-year-old tunes you've never heard of, so I think in terms of, I think of peaks and troughs in terms of good music that I've not heard before, that keeps me entertained, it makes me think, wow, I thought I knew what I was doing, and this has completely blown my mind and really inspired me, so I think, personally, in terms of peaks and troughs, no, not, I've not really seen any, but people always want to go out, people always want to go out, have a beer and a dance, or listen to some music, less people want to pay for music now, but people still, you know, no matter what kind of formats or, you know, kind of crises before the music industry, since before recording music began, before people were buying sheet music in the nineteen, you know, in the eighteen hundreds, before wax cylinder, people went out, got drunk, and then danced to a band, or people entertained each other around campfires, there's always been, right, we've, you know, we've grown some beans today, and we've had our dinner, and, you know, we've repaired the roof on the, on the.
Thatched cottage.
Yeah, the thatched cottage. I think vinyl is the thatched cottage of the music industry, but, yeah. Vinyl cottage, hmm.
That's for the records.
Chicken.
I think the chicken, I think that peaks, sorry.
Yeah, just, but basically, I think you only really experience peaks and troughs if you stick in one thing, like Susan Boyle probably went from very little to loads, and now she's probably not having a very good time again in a space of about a year, that would even remind me of that, because you had that Susan Boyle fact on the wall before, but that's, I think if you're diversifying, you're into lots of different things, I mean, the music industry's seasonal anyway, gigs, you know, you might have a trough in January where there's no gigs, but then, you know, in other countries, you know, that's their summer, so, you know, you go Australia and tour all year round if you want, there's lots of different ways around it, or if you're not making as much music from records, I mean, basically, gigs used to be a way to promote your releases, to encourage, you know, and you wouldn't make much money doing gigs, but that would be an investment, because you'd be letting people know about your new release, now you're releasing music, so, and hoping that people go to your gigs, it's completely the other way around, so I don't see it as peaks and troughs, I think it's.
I think that was a major more in the, sort of, because you did, what was.
You mean in the city?
Sort of creating a scene within a city.
Yeah.
There'd been the sort of peaks, you know, there were more venues, and they were really busy, there was a general board, and everybody was dancing together, and it did seem sort of build from very little, and through less than there is now, I'd say, and then it sort of peaked and dropped off.
Yeah.
So a Preston fan said, why, like Team Watford, like starting, said, it was a May and Bell session, and then, remember from KBC, and then suddenly it just dropped, and it, Team Watford dropped, because it really came from the May and Bell session, it's kind of like a bit, the bacon's lost in life.
I think, yeah. I'm not saying it's necessarily that thing, because, you know, that's the sort of Tony Wilson idea, this idea that you've got to go through the troughs to get to the even, to sort of go down.
But also, the other thing is that, one person's peak is another person's trough, it's getting quite complicated, but what I mean is, I always kind of think back to, you know, around the millennium, two thousand, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, two thousand and one, where the music industry was running around saying superstar DJs, super clubs, Ministry of Sound, Dave Pearce, Rolling of Fat Wong, euphoric anthems, yeah? And in Manchester, on a Tuesday night, there was this Australian theme bar, and a group of people got together who didn't want to buy into the whole superstar DJ, Dave Pearce, euphoric anthems bollocks, they wanted to, somewhere where they could play and perform their songs, and they, the only place that they found was a Tuesday night on Peter Street, in the middle of the horrendous kind of bar thirty-eight type thing, they called the night Gecko, and about thirty people used to go every Tuesday, but those thirty people were Elbow, Ironclute, Doves, Badly Drawn Boy, and out of that little Tuesday night, which to, an outsider would look like a fucking trough and a half, that was the seed that had sown, was being sown for all those artists, it was an opportunity, basically.
Leo, you must have experienced.
Leo, Leo's older than he looks, despite Leo's polished good looks, he's been through a few peaks and troughs.
Can I go to the toilet, please?
Yeah. Allow that, allow that very far. Leo, do you want to do a quick peak and trough? One man's peak.
Yeah, I've been racking my brains though, you know, when you asked that question, you know, for, in case I was asked, if you're looking at the Tony Wilson kind of, you know, his seven-year cycle, yeah, I do agree with him, and I do feel, and I don't know if it's just personal, yeah, I do feel that there is a, we are in a bit of a trough in Manchester, and on the music scene, I really do, and I just feel that people in the music industry or the so-called it people in Manchester are really looking for the next scene, and there might even be like pushing bands, I don't really think are that good, that quality, you know, you were talking about quality before, and so to me, at the moment, there is a bit of a trough, and I'm looking for it to, you know, to go up, but I can't think of anything from the past.
No, no, I'm just thinking, you got, did you ever go into a radio station and the doors open because it's a new band from Manchester, or did that used to happen, and it now doesn't?
Because they were from Manchester?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was kind of, obviously, after that Manchester time, it was ridiculous that any rubbish band in Manchester would be signed, and, yeah, those radio producers would want to listen to the, to, you know, I'm not going to say any of the bands, it's.
Well, it's endless, we haven't got time.
Yeah, but you know, there was only a handful of them that were really, that were really good, it was, it was a big high for Manchester, and I can't really think about after that Manchester scene, whether we've come through and found, you know, got those other bands, I mean, bands like Elbow and No Ironclute, they have been around forever, you know, I worked with both bands, been around for absolutely ever, so they're not one of the new, the new blood coming through.
But there was that little moment with Fearing Music, Nine Black Alps, Long Court, all that lot, it felt like it was going to go again.
Do you know what, yeah, you said that before, and I was, and again, it made my mind start working overtime, and I was thinking, I think only a few, I think a few people were wanting that to happen.
Right.
And those bands, I mean, a couple of them were good, but they just weren't good enough, you know, and that's why they didn't come through.
Yeah, that was too soon as well, too soon for it to happen. The whole concept of peaks and troughs, and you're definitely right when you say one man's peaks and other man's trough, because when Manchester's at an absolute high, and the music industry swarm around it, and you mentioned that saturation of bad quality control is just like, it kills, it kills Manchester, you know, everyone always calls Manchester the scene that celebrates itself, and there was a bunch of terrible bands, and that's a serious trough, I think, you know, but, you know, and then you can go, there's a time where, you know, there's only like, the night and day can be empty, like every night of the week, and then just one amazing band, you know, because people start doing it for the right reasons, I'm only young, but I've seen that peak and trough a few times, where people have been doing it for the right reasons, people have been doing it for the wrong reasons, but a beautiful thing about now is, a lot of people making music now are definitely doing it for the right reasons, because they know there's no money in it, like just four or five years ago, there was still money there, that's quite recent history, now there's, there's no money in there.
And I think if you look at, if you look at where we are in terms of, you know, the economics of the real world, then, you know, I can see a lot of similarities with the mid nineteen eighties, in the sense that if there were loads of great jobs out there, okay, well, lots of young people go out and get those so-called great jobs, but they aren't, so maybe that will give people a chance to actually think, well, hang on a minute, I might as well do something that I really want to do, maybe I don't have to sign up to a proper job right now, because there aren't any anyway, I might as well see what I can achieve off my own bat, and if you're not going to be making any money out there in the real world anyway, why not make no money in the music industry? It's a better place to make no money than the call centre industry.
I agree, there was many, many, I can't really think of any scenes that have come out of quite well-off people having a dabble and happening, you know, you think of hip-hop and reggae and a lot of, a lot of originally quite specialist musics, which have become worldwide and taken a life of their own.
Rock and roll.
Rock and roll, yeah, you know, blues, anything, you know, all these people had very difficult circumstances, you know, hip-hop, right, I've got a couple of beaten-up old turntables, not got a guitar. You know, hip hop, right, I've got a couple of beaten up old turntables, I've not got a guitar, but I reckon if I can borrow your hi-fi, then we can have a party going. You know, and the same with, you know, reggae. People who aren't well off tend to be very resourceful. And when people are confronted, resourceful people are confronted with difficult situations, they find a way around it, their personality and their spirit comes out in that and something interesting is created. And that's why people with very little equipment quite often make really interesting music. And someone with a Mac with a thousand plugins on it will never finish a track because they're just dabbling around and never really digging into stuff, you know? You take a crap old drum machine that may be a broken effects pedal and a tape deck and, you know, give yourself a couple of years of that and see what you can come out with. And I think it's that that comes out of the troughs. But what might have been economic trough is a creative peak, you know what I mean? Even if that might not be reflected in international acclaim or record sales because it might be a purely local scene like the hip hop scene was in New York in the 70s until 1979 where suddenly, you know, Rappers Delight came out and it became worldwide.
Okay, we already got unfortunately a few moments left. Was there a question from Stella on the front row?
There was perhaps a question, we're following up on the peaks and troughs. I moved to Preston in January. I came here to be the festival director for the Preston Guild. And if anything was a peak, it's got to be Preston Guild and that's 2012. And that's not very far away. So we need to be building towards that peak. Now, you know, you can see I'm not the youthful person I was when I lived in Manchester and put gigs on all over the city, lots of theatre, lots of music, lots of dance in the hacienda, in the Ritz, in the Royal Northern College of Music and the library and all of that. And that was, that was all great. And then be careful what you wish for, we opened a venue. I don't think it was quite as great as the energy of going into all those interesting spaces and being under arches in Castlefield and along the canal and who knows what. So I'm hoping, as I move through the planning for 2012 and Preston Guild, it's the people's guild, you're the people, those of you who are from Preston. It's a showcase for Preston and Lancashire. And it's the biggest after-party in the country, all back to hours after the Olympics in September. All back to hours is the cry. And what are people going to come back to? Well, I'm hoping they're going to come back to a city full of stuff that's happening in every possible space. So I'm really encouraging everybody who is in Preston or wants to come and work in Preston and be together with us in the guild. We're going to launch the brand in September and start, you know, really trying to rev up the energy. It's, you know, we're looking back to look forward to the future. So we're looking for at least 100 young producers who are going to take on the baton and plan the guild for 2032. So it's not going to be just about people like me, but anybody in this room with a spirit and the get up and go. So, you know, do sign up for that. And, you know, any partners on, I mean, it's brilliant what's going on here with encouragement and training and all of that. In Peney, Lancs, yes, we want that here in Preston as well. And we want, you know, more than one Conti. There's a group of people out there trying to reopen the cinema on Firegate. Well, that's a place that gigs could happen, it doesn't have to be just about film. You know, the Hollis Institute that's been bought, but that could be a site. If the clubs close down half the week, those nights are available. But there's plenty of other spaces, recycling lines have got great big warehouses they're telling me about. So I'm hearing these things, perhaps you're not and perhaps we can, you know, we can be sharing that kind of information. Sorry for a bit of a rant.
Now, do you, because funny, on my list, one of the things I was going to put was festivals.
Yeah.
Because they are, you know, they are good for profile. But the thing that I always think about festivals is that you need to work up to them. Festivals are no good if someone just drops into a city and does like a week of great events and then goes again. You know, the festival is about the process and the preparation leading up and then, to use a buzzword, the legacy afterwards, isn't it? Which is why, although we're talking about 2012, we're actually talking about something that is important now. And how can you, how are you, how can you intervene to make that process start?
Well, I'm based in the city councils, first time I worked for a council. But there's some great people there who, you know, they've got a programme of activity through the year, some of which I think, there were some people here earlier on who are going to put some bands on during Riversway Festival this year. But we're compiling a list of venues, we can help point people to that. We can, you know, we can support in every which way. There's not very much money, we're trying to fundraise for the guild, so our focus is there. But, you know, we're working with Creative Lancashire, we're working with a range of partners. You know, we put out a call for great ideas, take off. Not many of them came from music promoters, if any, I don't think, Ruth? Yeah, so, you know, we hear that one big weekend, it was all the focus on, you know, what was happening there, 53 degrees and the little venues weren't involved. We've got a plan for that so that everybody can get engaged. So I suppose really what I'm saying is, you know, get on the website, start getting in touch with us, start being part of the discussions. We'll start, you know, we'll be doing road shows, we'll be doing public meetings and so on. And we want you all to get involved.
Okay. It's good that we can end on a positive note like that, because we do unfortunately have to end as it is 8.30. Can we just, I don't know if Ed wants to take the mic and make any formal thanks, but I'd like to thank Ed, who's kind of the contact that I've made through Soundbites. But I know he's just part of a team, so I think the whole Soundbites team need to be congratulated on today. Also, just in case Ed forgets to thank me and the panel, could you thank me and the panel, please?
Actually, I've got nothing else to say, but thank you all for coming today, it's been a fantastic day. This is just part of the continuous work that we do at Mackish County Council's Creative Lancashire team. And in October, we're doing a Soundbites event as part of the music festival in Lancaster. The details are up at Stewie's website and I hope to see you over there. Thanks for coming.